Good morning, everyone. Good morning, distinguished guests, colleagues and friends. A very warm welcome to today's event organized by the International Telecommunication Union, ITU, and the United for Smart Sustainable Cities Initiative, U4SSC, kindly hosted by the Municipality of Barcelona in partnership with Fira de Barcelona and the Spanish Federation of Municipalities and Provinces, FEMPE. We sincerely thank all our partners for making today's event possible. My name is Chiara. I have the honor of serving as your master of ceremony for today. So what is U4SSC? U4SSC is the United Nations' premier platform for shaping the cities of the future, making them people-centered, digitally-inclusive, climate-resilient and sustainable. With support from 20 UN entities, U4SSC empowers local leaders to share, learn and lead transformative change. We are delighted to have you here as we explore how digital transformation, innovation and collaboration are shaping the future of people-centered and sustainable cities around the world. Let's begin today's discussion with opening remarks from our distinguished speakers. So I would like to call on Dr. Ocan Geray, Ms. Alin Mata, Mr. Luis Martinez-Sicluna Sepulveda and Dr. Baelle Jamusi on the stage, please. Our first speaker is Dr. Ocan Geray, Chair of U4SSC. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Geray for his opening remarks.
Good morning, distinguished colleagues, friends and partners. I would like to welcome each and every one of you to today's special session on U4SSC. Before I start maybe talking about the initiative itself, I would like to thank the organizer, ITU, for organizing this session for us today and also all the UN agencies. I would like to convey my sincere gratitude for their support over the years, making this initiative a global one today. I'm personally actually pleased to be in Spain. It's one of my favorite countries with a very rich history, vibrant culture and also breathtaking architecture, I must say, and the technological prowess that we have seen in the past couple of days. Frankly, we were in Valencia two days ago in another event called First Cityverse Assembly and then we are here in Barcelona today. And what other venue could exist better than actually Smart City Expo, World Congress in Barcelona to deliberate on smart and sustainable cities and discuss and shape the future of cities moving forward, in fact. I would like to indicate that we, as an initiative, have grown immensely over the years from its inception in 2016. We started as an initiative back then, but today we have the backing of 20 UN agencies, United Nations agencies with us as our partners. But we are a multi-stakeholder initiative. We don't only have UN agencies, we also have cities on board with us, academia, private sector, subject matter experts in the area of smart and sustainable cities. And I would like to thank each and every participant of U4SSC for their efforts to make this today a truly global platform. It's close maybe family, a close family that we work together, but it's become a truly global platform. I think the challenges that we have all over the world today in cities surpass almost all the global challenges, issues that we face. So we have to find ways to work together. Today, I'm also honored to mark the launch of our new deliverable on digital well-being, which is close to my heart. And I would like to thank all the participants of the thematic group since its launch to bring it to its end today. And we're launching the deliverable and in a session we will go through it in a bit more detail. But digital well-being tells us that as we build smart and sustainable cities, it's also very important not just to harness technologies, but also make them people-centric, more humane in general. And we're touched upon the people aspects of digital transformation in the Digital Well-Being Thematic Group. This is, today's session is not just to launch the deliverable, but it's also a call to action, actually. A call to all cities to join us, to join our niche and unique platform, U4SSC, because each and every city today is facing similar challenges and each and everyone is working on their own. We think that the collaboration, working together, will make things much, much easier for cities and also for us to help them find solutions. So I really would like to invite all cities to join us to bring their experiences to U4SSC and also their opportunities and challenges. Let's put our brains together. I think the collective capital that we have will help all the cities in the world to address their opportunities and challenges. And also, I would like to humbly ask all our members in U4SSC, all our partners, to think deeply and also develop and innovate wisely but swiftly also. Because cities, cities need deliberate insights and decisive actions on the ground to make things a reality today. And I think it will be this group working together who will help the cities to overcome their challenges. So my humble suggestion would be to let us build cities, let us harness technology, let us leverage on digital transformation to build resilient, inclusive and sustainable cities, but also humane ones. People, it's all about people at the end of today. With that, I would like to end my opening speech and I welcome all of you again to our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ocan. Our next speaker is Ms. Alin Mata, Head of the United Nations Innovation Technology Accelerator for Cities, Unitac. Please welcome Ms. Alin Mata.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me well? It's okay? Yes? Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome also from me. So it's a true honor to join you today at this special session of the U4SSC and my deepest appreciation to, of course, the host of this meeting, the vibrant and forward-thinking Municipality of Barcelona, also in partnership with Fira de Barcelona and the Spanish Federation of Municipality and Provinces. My special thanks also to ITU for the great partnership and for bringing us in. So what I want to share with you is that today, digitalization is not merely a technological change. It's a social transformation that redefines how we live, how we work and how we connect. However, this transformation is profoundly unequal. Digital divides persists all over the world. Data misuse remains a risk and public access is often lacking. Additionally, we are gathering at a time when 2.88 billion people globally lack adequate housing. Over 1.1 billion live in formal settlements and nearly 300 million are homeless. If you have been following me, I have been repeating these numbers everywhere that I go. And why? Because we cannot ignore these figures and they are not only reflecting a housing crisis. It's also a growing inequality crisis, one that urbanization alone cannot solve unless we commit to inclusive, sustainable and rights-based urban development and use of technology. This is why digitalization is a key driver of our new strategic plan that is going to be implemented between 2026 and 2029. It's a crucial instrument for achieving universal access to housing, land and basic services, the foundations of sustainable urban development. Therefore, our People-Centered Smart City Program at UNHAPDAT is a means to the implementation of this new strategic plan and the work of U4SSC is even more important to our organization nowadays. This is not about adding technology to the planning of cities, but also using data and digital tools to close structural gaps. Therefore, the question for us is not whether cities will become digital, but how to ensure that they do so inclusively, ethically and in a people-centered way. So this event that is held here under the umbrella of the Smart City Expo World Congress is more than just a meeting for us. It's really a global platform that we can discuss and learn from you on bold ideas that we can find actionable solutions. And this is really my wish for our discussions here today. So together, we are advancing a shared committing to shaping cities that are people-centered, digitally-inclusive, climate-resilient and sustainable. These are the principles that are the core of both U4SSC's mission and also the UN's global urban agenda, including the SEGs, the New Urban Agenda, the Global Digital Compact and the PACTA for the future. Those efforts will build on UNHAPDAT, of course, previous work on people-centered smart cities, but also on all agencies and partners that continue to work together. An additional point to share with you is also the UNHAPDAT Digital Facility, Unitac, which is the accelerator for cities to advance innovation technology, where we have been deploying technology to support access to services, adequate housing and better land management to the most vulnerable population. Equally important is that we are developing now a GOAI toolkit. I know that some of you attended the Inception Workshop yesterday, but I invite you all to also contribute to this work because the idea is that this will work as a guide that combines artificial intelligence and geospatial analysis for evidence-based planning. Equally important, we are working together to develop a new smart strategy toolbox that offers a methodological process for creating people-centered smart city digital tools. All this work and visions that we can find, pilot projects that are scalable, sustainable strategies that are aligned with SCG 11 and that also contribute to the new urban agenda. Before closing, this is the second thing that I also repeat everywhere. So I would like to invite all of you to please join us next year in the World Urban Forum in Baku. It's going to be held in May and the topic of the year is Housing the World. And this is an opportunity for us because together with ITU and all of you, the idea is that we can organize sessions where we can demonstrate how technology, governance and community engagement can ameliorate access to adequate housing and basic services. We see this as a perfect moment to also continue the U4SSC engagement. So in closing, at UNHAPDAT, we work to see that every byte of data, every connected center and every digital service must ultimately serve people, making their lives better. As we look ahead, let's us reaffirm our collective commitment to shaping cities that embody the best of innovation and the best of humanity. Thank you so much for the invitation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mata. Our next opening address will be delivered by Mr. Luis Martinez-Sicluna Sepulveda, Secretary General of the Federación Española de Municipios y Provincias, or FEMPE. Please welcome Mr. Luis Martinez-Sicluna.
Muchas gracias por permitirme que les hable en castellano. En primer lugar, quiero saludar afectuosamente a los miembros de esta mesa, a Ocan Geray, Alin Mata y por supuesto a Baelle Jamusi. Para mí como secretario general de la Federación Española de Municipios y Provincias es un inmenso honor participar en esta sesión especial de la iniciativa Unidos por Ciudades Inteligentes y Sostenibles. Quiero en primer lugar agradecer a la Unión Internacional de Telecomunicaciones y también al Ayuntamiento de Barcelona por haber organizado esta sesión especial de trabajo. Ayuntamiento de Barcelona y Ciudad de Barcelona, que ya es un referente mundial en lo que es la digitalización y la sostenibilidad. Y por supuesto quiero también reconocer el trabajo de los organismos de Naciones Unidas que apoyan esta iniciativa más de 20, que junto con los ayuntamientos demuestran que la cooperación internivel es esencial para transformar el futuro de nuestras ciudades. Estoy representando a la Federación de Municipios y Provincias, la Federación Española, que representa más de 8.100 ayuntamientos españoles, grandes y pequeños, urbanos y rurales. Todos ellos están comprometidos con un objetivo común, como es el transformar la vida de las personas desde la acción local. Compartimos plenamente la visión de la iniciativa Unidos por las Ciudades Inteligentes y Sostenibles de que la tecnología y la innovación deben ser instrumentos al servicio de las personas, herramientas que reduzcan las desigualdades y que impulsen la inclusión de personas y territorios. En España, muchos ayuntamientos están ya adoptando, integrando soluciones digitales en la gestión de sus servicios. Pero coincidiendo con lo que he dicho, Alin, no estamos solo ante un reto tecnológico, sino que estamos sobre todo ante un reto ético, social y humano. Desde la Federación Española de Municipios y Provincias estamos trabajando para que ninguna ciudad, ningún pueblo quede atrás, para que la brecha digital no constituya una nueva forma de desigualdad. Hemos mirado con gran interés las novedades del Plan de Trabajo 2025-2026 de esta iniciativa U4SSC, así como las publicaciones que se presentarán durante esta sesión y que van a servir de guía para los responsables públicos y técnicos de todo el mundo. Estoy convencido que este foro va a permitir compartir experiencias y soluciones reales desde la creación de infraestructuras estables a la promoción de nuevos modelos de gobernanza humana basados en los datos, en la inteligencia artificial y también en la participación ciudadana. Pero también creemos que este encuentro va a ser una oportunidad para reflexionar sobre el papel de las ciudades como motor para el desarrollo sostenible global. Y es que los gobiernos locales son la primera línea de acción para hacer frente a los desafíos que hoy afronta la humanidad, el cambio climático, la crisis de la vivienda o la movilidad. Por eso consideramos que es sumamente importante que los entes locales tengan voz en todos los debates internacionales. Quiero también hacer referencia al acuerdo de colaboración en el que estamos trabajando con la Unión Internacional de Telecomunicaciones, un acuerdo que permite reforzar nuestro compromiso mutuo para promover la transformación digital de las ciudades españolas en línea con los objetivos de desarrollo sostenible de la Agenda 2030. Y en este marco de cooperación esperamos, de una parte, fomentar el intercambio de conocimiento, también impulsar proyectos piloto en municipios de distintos tamaños y finalmente reforzar las capacidades técnicas de los gobiernos locales. Estoy convencido además de que este marco de cooperación va a permitir acelerar las normas internacionales y las buenas prácticas de la WIT en el ámbito local que se puedan aplicar para conseguir un objetivo que todos compartimos, que la digitalización sea más justa, más humana y más sostenible. Quiero concluir con un mensaje de optimismo. Las ciudades cuando cooperan se convierten en un motor de innovación y de esperanza. La tecnología es importante, nadie lo duda, pero aún lo es más la voluntad de colaboración y el liderazgo compartido. Estoy seguro que esta jornada va a ser muy fructífera. Les agradezco su atención. Muchísimas gracias.
Muchas gracias, señor Martinez-Sicluna. So to conclude our opening segment, we are honored to have with us Dr. Baelle Jamusi, Deputy Director of the ITU Telecommunications Standardization Bureau and Chief of the Study Groups and Policy Department of ITU. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Jamusi.
Thank you very much, Chiara. Very good morning. Buenos dias, distinguished colleagues and friends. I see many, many friends here today and I'm really glad that we are celebrating 10 years of the launch of U4SSC. This reminds me my first trip with Cristina to Dubai before U4SSC was launched. I think it was 2015 where we, 2014, thank you. So 2014, she dragged me to go with her to Dubai to say we have to launch the first implementation of the key performance indicators of the Smart Sustainable Cities, the standard that was published from Study Group 20. And I went and I learned on the way that that KPI project was really instrumental in bringing cities together to focus on the data and to be able to collect the data across multiple sectors. And then what Dubai found out then is that the data is not collected, the data is in different formats, there is no data authority. And as a result of that project, a number of institutions got formed and I'm glad that today we're celebrating 10 years with Dr. Ocan from Dubai. I think then it was called Smart Dubai. And now we are in 250 cities with that project in partnership with UN Habitat and many other UN partners. So this is off the script, not what Cristina wrote for me to read. But now let me, let me go to the script because I think it's important to it. It's a great pleasure to join you in Barcelona. Hablo un poquito español, pero comprendo la presentación del señor. I understand more Spanish than I can speak, so I'll stick to English. And coming to Barcelona is really a joy. I must tell you, yesterday I was in three countries and four cities to make it to Barcelona. I started in Munich, went to Zurich and Bern in Switzerland and landed in Barcelona around midnight. So I'm very glad to be here and I couldn't miss this opportunity to join you. The launch of U4SSC in 2016 together with our partners, UNECE and UN Habitat, had a simple but ambitious vision to create global UN platform that helps cities harness digital transformation to become smarter, more sustainable and above all, more people-centered. That Alin reminded us of the importance of remembering those who don't have homes, who are homeless or not connected. So we talk a lot about technological advancements, but we also need to think of the global South and the human-centered, as was mentioned. So a decade later, that vision has grown into a living global movement supported by 20 UN entities. How many UN entities in the room today? Great, so ITU, UNU, UN Habitat. Great, how many cities? City planners, city mayors, great. Other government officials? Super, thank you. And of course, private sector? Super, great, thank you. And this really shows the multi-stakeholder partnership because we cannot do it alone. As a UN agency alone, we cannot do this. We cannot implement on the ground as much if we don't have the governments on board, if we don't have the private sector, if we don't have the researchers and if we don't have the city planners who need to put the policies to use the technology. At the heart of this effort lies the work of the ITU. This year, we celebrate 160 years. And yesterday I was in Bern. I looked up how many years we were in Geneva. It's about 77 years in Geneva, 80 years in Bern because the Secretariat of ITU was in Bern, the capital of Switzerland, and the first three years in Paris. So ITU was launched in Paris, moved to Bern. Eight years later, in 1948, moved to Geneva when the UN was established. And our foundation in 1865 was the International Telegraph Union to provide standards to interconnect telegraphs around the world. Fast forward 160 years, now we're leading smart cities, we're leading the artificial intelligence, the AI for good. We're leading the connectivity of schools with Giga in partnership with UNICEF. So the reason we can endure is the unique composition of ITU. It's the only UN agency that has 194 member states and 1,000 private sector entities, research centers and academia. I think that mix makes us vibrant, makes us evolving. And of course, Study Group 20 was born with a lot of labor. 2016, right, at the T-SAG meeting? 15, 2015, exactly, just before WTS, eh? It was an outcome of a focus group on smart sustainable cities and a lot of work on IoT that was dispersed in many study groups. And so our membership, both governments and private sector, came together at a T-SAG meeting, which is our telecom standards advisory group, and said we must launch a new study group that combines the efforts of the U4SSC-focused group that Cristina was leading with many people here in the room that were leading from the private sector, from cities and government. Alin just reminded me, she was then the regulator of Uganda and she was in the meeting with this new proposal to create a study group on IoT and smart sustainable cities. And I'm glad that the ITU took that decision. It was not an easy one, but we took that decision to have a home for the Internet of Things, for being able to collect that data, being able to have sensors in the city. And today we talk about digital twins. Without that connectivity, we cannot talk about digital twins. So you see, over this journey of 160 years of the ITU together, there are seeds that we plant and they grow and blossom. And now that AI is possible and that we have the data from IoT, from various other, like I mentioned the example of Dubai 10 years ago, starting to collect the data. Now that you have the data and you have the artificial intelligence and the large learning models, then we can use that data to predict. We're no longer in a reactive mode in the city. We can use that data to predict not only developed countries, but also in developing countries. I think leapfrogging is possible. And with partnership with UN Habitat, even in those low-income countries, we can, with data, with satellite imaging, et cetera, we can use the scarce resources much better than if we didn't have that data analysis. So I went off script again, sorry, Chris. But I think I want to take this opportunity to thank many people. The U4SSC management team, Dr. Ocan on the vice chairs, our partners in the UN, our partners in the cities. I think Spain has been one of the leading countries and one of the leading implementers of the U4SSC in many cities around Spain. And I'm glad that we are hosted by the city of Barcelona today in partnership with the Fira for this conference. I see John and I've been with John to few countries to implement the audit of the U4SSC KPIs. We worked together in Tunisia, my home country, in two cities, Bizert and Cairoen. And it was the same learning. The city, when they implement the KPI, they realize how much the data is dispersed and how much the data is not collected in a standard form and how much potential there is once they do the analysis. We were also in Riyadh together to do the KPI analysis. So it's good to see you, John. So with this, I want to conclude to say that we have come a long way. We have been building on very strong foundation with international standards. We've been building on strong foundation because of our multi-stakeholder composition. And we have a lot more work to do. The numbers Alin mentioned is a real challenge. We need to focus on those people who are not connected, who don't have homes and see how we can use technology for good, whether it's AI, smart cities, KPIs, data, and leverage things like Giga, projects where we have an office here in Barcelona and we have an office in Geneva. Giga is about connecting schools. And if you connect schools in a community, then you can start about storing data, about collecting data, about providing the seed for smart sustainable cities. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, doctor Jamusi, y a todos nuestros oradores de abertura por establecer el tono y reafirmar nuestro compromiso colectivo con la innovación que eleva a la gente, las ciudades y las comunidades. Muchas gracias. Por favor, me unen en darles un aplauso. Y ahora, para abrir nuestras discusiones, tenemos una presentación clave de la señora Cristina Buetti, secretaria de la ITU U4SSC. Por favor, me unen en la invitación de Cristina.
Buenos días y buenos días a todos. Es un placer estar aquí. Esta es realmente la primera vez que estamos teniendo una sesión especial de esta iniciativa en el marco de la Expo de Ciudades Inteligentes. Se celebró junto con nuestros colegas de UN Habitat, de UNU y de otras entidades de UN la reunión anual de U4SSC hace unos pocos días, el 31 de octubre. Y luego venir aquí hoy, creo que es realmente un momento importante también para compartir con esta comunidad el trabajo que se está haciendo. Y bueno, creo que los oradores anteriores dieron el tono de lo que las ciudades están enfrentando actualmente. Sabes, desde los números que obtuvimos de Aline, los desafíos en agua, en arquitectura, en clima, en desigualdad digital, en crecimiento de población rápido y también los desafíos que las ciudades, incluso con sistemas avanzados, enfrentan cuando tienen que compartir datos. Y se encuentran atrapadas en sistemas silenciosos y el legado vinculado a un vendedor específico. No quiero mencionar, por supuesto, las difíciles situaciones financieras que muchas de las ciudades están enfrentando y para las cuales se necesitan nuevas medidas. Así que en todo esto, es claro que las ciudades ahora tienen que tener nuevas formas y tienen que abordar problemas de una perspectiva completamente diferente. Así que lo que fue algo que hace unos años fue considerado probablemente una medida tradicional ahora de poner más dinero y resolver el problema o crear una nueva plataforma ahora no es aún una posibilidad en la mesa. Esta es una de las razones por las que la Unión Internacional de Telecomunicaciones, la ITU, que es la agencia especialista de la tecnología de la Unión, como mencionó el doctor Jamusi, hace más de diez años empezó a trabajar en ciudades inteligentes. En ese momento, fue realmente algo bastante inusual que la ITU realmente toque un lugar en un sector que no es un sector tradicional de una entidad de UN que trabaja con reguladoras nacionales y sistemas telecomunicales. Pero esa fue una especie de decisión bolda de realmente ver cómo las tecnologías podrían apoyar ciudades en su camino para ser más conectadas, para ser también más capaces y más preparadas para nuevos desafíos. Y creo que probablemente los dos objetivos estratégicos de la ITU, la conectividad universal y la transformación digital sostenible, realmente representan la visión y también la misión de la ITU en este aspecto. En el trabajo que actualmente estamos teniendo, el grupo de estudios ITU 20 ha jugado un papel importante y estoy muy feliz de que hoy tengamos al presidente del grupo de estudios y la silla vicepresidente, en esta sala. Porque este grupo de estudios no solo ha dado la posibilidad a muchas ciudades de beneficiarse de los estándares que han sido desarrollados por más de doscientos expertos que regularmente atienden esta reunión, pero especialmente han dado la posibilidad a esas ciudades que no tienen los recursos, que no tienen realmente el conocimiento para poder estar al día y, sabes, asegurarse de que puedan acelerar su transformación digital. Lo que inicialmente comenzó como un concentrado en ciudades inteligentes y sostenibles y Internet de las Cosas, como has oído, a lo largo de los años se ha extendido, en realidad, a la inteligencia artificial y ahora incluso al universo de las ciudades. Así que realmente mirando cómo incluso las tecnologías inmersivas pueden traer una nueva perspectiva y especialmente dar la posibilidad a las ciudades para proporcionar mejores servicios. Complementar este trabajo es el trabajo de U4SSC, que además de ser apoyado por veinte entidades de UN ha estado realmente sirviendo como una plataforma que ha involucrado más de quinientos expertos que están trabajando dentro de los diferentes grupos temáticos. Ahora, como puedes ver en este slide multitudinero, y eso fue dejado multitudinero por propósito porque fue realmente la oportunidad para compartir con ustedes que dentro de cada grupo temático hay realmente mucho trabajo que se está haciendo en diferentes áreas donde puedes contribuir, pero también puedes beneficiarte. Por ejemplo, varios años atrás empezamos con Ramon en Valencia para realmente empezar a trabajar en plataformas inteligentes. Una de las cosas que recuerdo que dijimos fue: "¿Qué podemos hacer juntos para asegurar que la ciudad pueda beneficiarse del trabajo de esta iniciativa?" Y ese deliverable que Ramon presentará más adelante te dará realmente una idea concreta sobre los años, en realidad, cómo ese deliverable ha sido usado por las ciudades, en particular cuando hablamos de construir una plataforma que realmente puede servir a la gente. Luego, los diferentes grupos temáticos, que se extienden desde la inteligencia artificial hasta, por ejemplo, el pronóstico futuro para las ciudades. Así que realmente mirando cómo una ciudad puede mirar hacia adelante, qué tipo de problema necesita anticipar para estar listo para el futuro. Pasando por, por ejemplo, infraestructura pública digital, que ha sido tradicionalmente un tema que ha sido abordado a nivel nacional y ahora más que nunca es un elemento clave importante de cada ciudad y de cada país. Porque si las ciudades no abrazan, en realidad, a nivel local la infraestructura pública digital, no habrá ninguna posibilidad de avanzar juntas. Y también estoy muy contenta de que hoy también marque la oportunidad para lanzar un nuevo informe, que fue dirigido por nuestro presidente, Okan, en particular, en el bienestar digital que realmente compartirá con ustedes lo que hemos estado haciendo en ese grupo temático. Este nuevo guía sobre el bienestar digital contará también una serie de casos de uso. Así que eso les dará también la oportunidad de ver en acción lo que se está haciendo. Y el material, por supuesto, está disponible en nuestro sitio web de U4SSC. Y complementando también el trabajo que hemos estado haciendo dentro de U4SSC, hemos estado asistiendo a las ciudades y en realidad ayudándlas a evaluar su nivel de sostenibilidad, su nivel de inteligencia y el progreso hacia el que están alcanzando los SDGs. Ahora, puede preguntarse por qué, como ciudad, debería estar haciendo eso. Y una de las razones por las que muchas ciudades se acercan a la ITU, la última implementación que hicimos, en realidad, fue con el ciudadano de Quito, como puedes ver en la pantalla, que concluyó, en realidad, hace unos pocos meses. Es simplemente porque la ciudad misma necesita realmente saber. Así que imagina que los KBIs son como ir al doctor y hacer un escaneo urónico y saber exactamente dónde se encuentra tu ciudad. Así que puedes visualizar inmediatamente, así que es un perfecto instrumento de política, cuáles son las áreas donde mi ciudad está haciendo bien, cuáles son las áreas donde mi ciudad necesita trabajar, cuáles son las áreas donde mi ciudad no está haciendo bien en absoluto. Así que si ves el rojo, eso significa que es definitivamente una área crítica que requiere una acción inmediata. Y eso es especialmente crítico en momentos en los que las ciudades no tienen mucho presupuesto y tienen que decidir dónde necesitan gastar el dinero. Porque si tienes, por ejemplo, sectores que requieren una acción inmediata, ese sería el perfecto instrumento que puedes usar para saber exactamente dónde necesitan poner sus recursos. Y si vas más allá de la evaluación pura y lo ves como un instrumento de evaluación personal, esto es algo que puedes usar a lo largo de los años también para medir tu propio progreso. Y eso es lo que muchas ciudades en realidad han estado haciendo. Ahora, como se mencionó, hay varias ciudades que han implementado mundialmente este estándar. Es un estándar de la ITU que se desarrolló junto con las entidades de UN. Este es realmente un esfuerzo de la Unión que realmente nos permitió synergizar y realmente aprovechar la experiencia de muchas entidades de UN para asegurarnos de que las ciudades sean capaces de tener un instrumento que primero puede aplicarse en cualquier lugar. No hay ninguna ciudad que no pueda aplicar este conjunto de KBIs. Ya sea una ciudad pequeña, ya sea una ciudad que tiene mucho dinero o muy poco dinero, o si está en países desarrollados o en países en desarrollo, eso no importa porque la ciudad tendrá la oportunidad de usarlo. Ese es realmente un instrumento testigo que funciona en todas partes. Y eso hace parte de esta iniciativa tan crucial porque es uno de esos proyectos concretos en el terreno donde hacemos evaluaciones de las ciudades y desde ese punto en adelante, la ciudad toma el liderazgo y toma sus propias decisiones y decide dónde realmente quieren trabajar. Ahora, cuando miramos cómo podemos aprovechar las tecnologías emergentes, por supuesto, la ITU tiene mucho trabajo que está haciendo en términos de, por ejemplo, los perros digitales, en términos de la inteligencia artificial, en términos de computación cuántica y, por supuesto, en términos también de mundos virtuales. Por eso, ya sabes, justo el año pasado, la ITU, UN ICC y Digital Dubai, junto con ahora más de, diría, setenta socios, no sesenta, en realidad, tenemos setenta socios ahora, han lanzado una nueva iniciativa sobre la inteligencia artificial y los mundos virtuales, descubriendo el universo de las ciudades. Y por qué el universo de las ciudades es tan importante ahora. Porque eso es realmente lo que creemos que podría ser la plataforma del futuro. Allí es donde vamos a ver, en realidad, los ciudadanos ser capaces de interactuar con las administraciones públicas directamente en una forma más, en realidad, personalizada, donde vamos a tener ciudades que sean capaces de proporcionar, en realidad, incluso asistencia en áreas remotas, aprovechando las tecnologías emergentes donde también vamos a usar estos instrumentos, incluso para las entrenamientos, incluso para los turistas. Así que imagino la posibilidad de que ustedes tengan una vista a la hermosa ciudad de Barcelona desde su propia escritura, pero no como visualizando una foto en su PC o teléfono móvil, sino simplemente siendo capaces de caminar por las calles y mirar la catedral y decir: "Oh, Dios mío, realmente quiero ir a la Sagrada Familia y ver con mis propios ojos lo que es esta catedral". Así que esa percepción es algo que será posible y que ahora más que nunca las ciudades están realmente analizando. Y esa es la razón por la cual cuando decidimos hacer, lanzar esta iniciativa, una de las primeras cosas que discutimos fue cómo podemos asegurarnos de que no cometamos los mismos errores que cometimos cuando miramos a las ciudades inteligentes. Cómo podemos asegurarnos de que no terminemos en un paisaje fragmentado. Cómo podemos asegurarnos de que realmente construimos un universo de las ciudades que queremos. Uno que es inclusivo, uno que es centrales de la gente, uno que es seguro, seguro y sostenible. Así que algo que realmente representa, en realidad, el valor que queremos compartir. Y en esta iniciativa que funciona a través de tres pilares, tienes, por ejemplo, un piloto que es más enfocado en realmente la estrategia y más realmente mirando cómo podemos apoyar a las ciudades, sabes, en proporcionar guías y asegurarnos de que la accesibilidad realmente está integrada desde el principio, así que desde el diseño. Cómo podemos asegurarnos de que lo que se construye es escalable porque no queremos tener una ciudad específica y luego reconstruir otra y luego reconstruir otra que no será totalmente interoperable. Así que aquí viene el piloto dos que es realmente más enfocado en asegurar la interoperabilidad, asegurarnos de seguridad, asegurarnos de que también podamos proporcionar una sandbox, un lugar seguro donde las ciudades puedan venir, probar su solución y saber que, sabes, la Unión les está ayudando a tener ese ambiente seguro y seguro. Y el último piloto tres es realmente más enfocado en aumentar la conciencia, en la construcción de capacidad y en asegurarnos de que podamos alcanzar como muchos como sea posible para asegurar que realmente nadie se deja atrás. Así que esto es realmente una iniciativa ambiciosa, probablemente, en un sentido, ir más allá de lo que muchas de las ciudades ahora están lidiando porque, por supuesto, están enfocadas en abordar los problemas actuales. Así que esto es realmente mirar el futuro y preparar a tus ciudades para algo que en unos años vendrá y que queremos asegurarnos de que se construya de una manera que es realmente muy inclusiva. Y con eso, me gustaría agradecerle por la oportunidad de estar aquí hoy. Agradecemos a la ciudad de Barcelona. Agradecemos al FAM por el increíble apoyo que hemos recibido a lo largo de los años porque el apoyo que tuvimos específicamente en ayudarnos y apoyándonos para llegar a muchas de las ciudades españolas ha sido fabuloso. Así que gracias al Secretario General y al equipo del FAM por dar a la ITU esta oportunidad. Y, por supuesto, también agradecemos a la Expo de Ciudades Inteligentes que nos da esta plataforma y a los colegas de UNU y UN Habitat por estar aquí hoy después de una reunión muy intensa de U4SSC el 31 de octubre. Así que gracias por su compromiso. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Muchas gracias, Cristina, por ese keynote inspirador. Ahora abrimos el sofá para un breve Q y A. Si tienen alguna pregunta, levanten la mano. Bien. Por favor, no hesite, por supuesto, en ir y hablar con Cristina si tienen preguntas más adelante durante la pausa. Así que ahora, ahora pasamos a sesión uno, enfocando en cómo las ciudades pueden construir una transformación digital centrada en la gente a través de una robusta infraestructura pública digital y un enfoco en el bienestar digital. El moderador de esta sesión es la señora Barbara Cole, líder de la Ostea Country Hub de U4SSC. Por favor, me unen en la invitación del doctor Barbara y los oradores, el doctor Okan y el doctor Rami. Invito a los oradores también a unirse a nosotros en el escenario. Gracias.
Buenos días a todos y muchas gracias por estas buenas remarques, Chiara, por abrir. Y, de hecho, como siempre, es un gran show estar aquí con todo el equipo de la ITU U4SSC de miembros que han sido tan geniales durante los últimos, no solo diez, sino aún más años en construir lo que hemos visto. Construir ciudades centradas en la gente a través de la transformación digital y la infraestructura pública. Esa es nuestra sesión hoy. De nuevo, mi nombre es Barbara Cole. Soy la líder de la Ostea Country Hub en Viena y es mi placer ser su moderadora. No es la primera vez que tuve el privilegio de coordinar conversaciones por el doctor Okengare y por mi querida amiga Rami Fati de Egipto. Nosotros hablamos antes, dijo, bueno, la última vez fue como hace un par de años. Y luego se ven en línea para todas esas conferencias y para todas esas sesiones que realizas porque esas son las cosas que vimos, fueron los resultados. Pero la gente nunca ve las muchas, muchas, muchas discusiones, las muchas interacciones entre los grupos, los varios grupos que forman el equipo entero que hace U4SSC. Así que hoy estamos lanzando tres emocionantes nuevos deliverables de U4SSC que reflejan la verdadera esencia de nuestra misión colectiva de construir ciudades que no solo sean inteligentes y conectadas, sino también inclusivas, sostenibles y centradas en la gente. Así que, de nuevo, bienvenido al doctor Okengare, que es el grupo temático de U4SSC, líder en la transformación digital para las ciudades centradas en la gente, y, por supuesto, el grupo temático de U4SSC sobre el bienestar digital. Rami Ahmed Fati es la líder del grupo temático de U4SSC de la infraestructura pública digital, DPI, para las ciudades. Así que Okan presentará sus deliverables primero, y supongo que siempre tiene, como siempre, una presentación o hablará libremente. Así que un marco para permitir que las ciudades centrales de la gente a través de la transformación digital y un guía a la transformación digital. Through Digital Transformation and a Guide to Digital Well-being. Okan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Bob. I think I will use the microphone. Good morning once again, distinguished participants and colleagues. I think it's okay. I'll probably use the microphone. It's all right. This is the redundant one. Can you hear me? I think it's okay now. Perfect. Sorry about the hiccups technology, but. So good morning once again, everyone, distinguished participants, colleagues, friends, standard setters even are with us today. In the next maybe twenty, twenty-five minutes, I'm gonna take you through two deliverables that we have completed recently in U4SC. In U4SC, I think all of us are passionate and have the common belief that it's all about people at the end of the day. We harness technologies, we use them, but it's all for the benefit of people. We engage people, we co-create with them. So people first is the approach that we have taken in U4SC. The first deliverable is about a framework for making digital transformation people centric. And the second deliverable, digital well-being, is gonna look at people themselves and their issues, their constraints, their challenges to achieve a digital transformation at the society level. And the framework that I'm gonna go through, the first deliverable does not supersede smart city strategies or digital transformation strategies. It can be used in conjunction with them to make it people centric. So that's a very important point. And in the second one, we will look at directly people related issues. So I think once we go through them, it will be more clear. But I'm not gonna spend too much time due to time limitations we have. Cities, if you look at cities today, they are almost the living laboratories for innovation. They are the the places where culture, society and technology intersect and innovate together to shape the future of cities. So they are actually the place where things happen at the end of the day. They are the place where our social, economic and environmental challenges are manifested. But technology is just an enabler when it comes to smart and sustainable cities. And it's not just the number of sensors that we deploy in the cities or the the amount of data streams that we analyze from those sensors, but it's all about how we empower people, people, how we uplift them, how we how we meet their aspirations. That is actually the most important thing in smart and sustainable cities. Why people centered digital transformation? Digital transformation might seem like a technical journey, a technology journey, but it's in fact a societal one. The people and the the public sector, the private sector, they all work in conjunction to make it happen at the end of the day. So it's an entire societal journey that we take and people are at the center of it. We do everything for the benefit of the people. And the approach that we have taken is to put is to is to achieve a people first approach when it comes to digital transformation. So in the deliverable, actually, you're gonna see this people centered approach being almost repeated in in so many areas pertaining to so many issues within the digital transformation. And cities today are actually signatories, either at the national level or at the local level, to different frameworks. So the Pact for the Future, Global Digital Compact, New Urban Agenda from UN Habitat, and also Resolution 98 for Digital Twins, Smart and Sustainable Cities, are today setting a framework for cities to operate in. So this is something that we have taken into account and we very closely align with those. Cristina explained actually U4SC initiative. I'm not gonna take too much time on it. All of you know it. We work around thematic groups. The deliverable that I'm gonna go through is done in the third bullet point, in the third thematic group mentioned on the slide, Digital Transformation for People-Centered Cities. So the deliverable that we have produced is the framework for enabling people centered cities through digital transformation. It's online available, you can download it. I'm just gonna take you some of the through some of the issues in it. We have identified five pillars to make the digital transformation people centric. So as you can see on the screen, the five pillars are the vision and the strategy, transformation within public sector organizations, digital infrastructure and IoT, multi-level governance. So we're looking at all the governance governance schemes applicable to digital transformation and finally financing and funding. So we want to take a we wanted to take a comprehensive perspective, a comprehensive lens in terms of achieving people centricity. So maybe I will skip those because of time. First pillar, vision and strategy. If we want to become people centric in digital transformation and if we want to put the people right at the center of it, we need to understand people's needs and expectations. We need to understand their aspirations. We need to engage with them. So this pillar is all about while setting the vision and the strategy for digital transformation, it's about engaging people. It's about understanding their needs and aspirations to to deliver services, facilities, all all the digital transformation initiatives in line with their expectations. So that's the first one. There are some sub items, as you see, I'm not gonna go through all of them. They are available in the deliverable, but it's all about enhancing the quality of life. It's empowering them, uplifting them, the people. Because if the people do not do not see the benefits, we're basically not using our resources effectively. So this is the first pillar in the framework itself. The second is about organizational transformation. We talk about people centricity. We want to put people at the center of digital transformation. But that means a cultural, a cultural change in the public institutions. So this pillar basically pertains to to instilling this culture of people centricity in the organizations. It's about showing empathy to people. It's about the way we design services with the people, co-create things with them and meet the needs of people. So it's the the institutional aspect that's included in this second pillar in the deliverable. Again, there are further details in the document, but it's all about instilling and inculcating the culture of people centricity in the public sector institutions so they can achieve people centricity. The third pillar that we looked at is the digital infrastructure and IoT. We we look at digital transformation. We want to achieve so many things, but at the end of the day, we should leave no one behind. We should leave no one offline in the cities that we serve. So we have to take that into account. We need to be inclusive in the way we deploy infrastructure. We need to avail it to people so they can use these services. So this pillar is pertaining to those. So universal access is very important. Digital literacy, these are touching at the at the at the heart of people in the in the cities. User centered design, when we design these services, they need to be usable, accessible by people. And also IoT and resilience. We need to make sure that they are up and running in the in the face of any challenges, threats or physical threats even that might arise. So these issues, availability and resilience, are also included in this third pillar about digital infrastructure and IoT. The fourth one is is at the level of governance. As you know, digital transformation initiatives usually have multiple levels of governance in the cities that we live in. It's not only at one level. So we have to make sure that inhabitants are involved, are engaged in the right way in the cities, collaboration and coordination, equity and inclusion, accountability and transparency and advisory process. People have to have to take that journey with the city itself. They have to be part of it. We have to align people with us in this digital transformation journey, in the societal transformation that we go through. So this is captured in the fourth pillar, which takes us last but not the least to the final pillar. If we really want to be people centric, it's not just about setting the vision with them, engaging them a bit, but it's also having them decide the priorities when it comes to resources allocation. Can we can we allow people even to decide on what initiatives, what projects they want to see in the cities that they live in? So the financing and funding is also engaging people to make decisions with the public sector to decide on the priorities and to decide which project gets funded as opposed to another one. So we're really taking it to almost another level when it comes to financing. And in terms of the funding and financing, we have also included issues around public-private partnerships, so creative ways of financing investments for smart cities, not just a short term view, but a longer term view in general. And in fact, we have another thematic group which might be permanent here. They are looking at intergenerational procurement in smart and sustainable cities. Most of the investments we make, for example, we will talk about digital public infrastructure. Those are longer term investments. And if we deliver them successfully, that's gonna they are gonna help us sustain digital transformation in the future. And they will also boost economy, they will uplift people. So these thematic groups that we have are all synergistic at the end of the day, synergistically designed. And funding and financing, as I said, is the last component that we have. Cristina mentioned the KPIs, I'm not gonna go through them. So people centricity, we need to deliver results to people. We need to show real outcomes that get delivered by the cities. So we have KPIs also. In in U4SC, in ITU, we have the KPIs. And also, as you know, UN Habitat has urban monitoring framework. So we have sufficient KPIs to measure real outcomes from these digital transformation initiatives. We have also included some examples from U4SC partners. Some city examples are mentioned here. But this is a journey that cities will have to take when it comes to people centricity. I'm not gonna go through in detail here for the examples, but each one is taking maybe a certain aspect and trying to achieve people centricity. So it's all about people at the end of the day. We must serve people first. We must put people at the center of digital transformation to achieve people centricity in our journey. And I would like to humbly call an action to mayors to in fact adopt this people centered approach, the framework, in conjunction with their own digital transformation strategies, be it smart city, be it digital city or or others that they formulate. They can work this in conjunction with it. I think that's kind of it's a complimentary, almost, an auxiliary tool that will help them to achieve people centricity. Because those other strategies tend to look at it more maybe from a technology perspective, how they harness technology. So they can combine this framework with it to achieve people centricity. That was the positioning, almost, the niche positioning that we had for this deliverable. And, you know, with this, we hope that we will be able to build inclusive, resilient and connected cities for all. Time wise, I hope we are doing okay. All right. The second deliverable, the second deliverable that I want to talk about, the the previous one we launched actually last Friday during the ninth annual U4SC meeting. So it's very new, just last week on Friday. And this one we're launching today, as I mentioned at the opening. And we are very excited. This is another thematic group that we worked on. It's a very niche area, but it's a very important area. So we talked about digital transformation and putting people right at the center of it. And the framework, we have just gone through through five pillars. But what about the people themselves? The framework does not talk about the people themselves. The framework that I mentioned talks about how the public sector organizations engage people, how they try to understand their visions, their expectations. But what about the the challenges and the barriers that people face with digital transformation? Because if we want to really succeed in digital transformation, we need to strike a balance between what we deliver when it comes to digital services, city services, and also how they are used and adopted by the people in the cities. So this deliverable is directly looking at people issues, understanding their concerns, their challenges, their barriers to address them so we can have this balanced approach in the city for digital transformation. I hope the distinction is clear. So this can also be used, in fact, in conjunction with the people centric framework and also smart city strategies, especially in cities where people don't feel, let's say, the the actual, the individuals that live in the cities sometimes don't feel comfortable with digital technologies. This deliverable tries to identify those issues and address them in a in an effective manner with limited resources. And one thing that we that we have actually identified during the thematic group work is that there is no framework for this in the world. So this is the first again framework that we are trying to capture around people issues. And what do we mean by that? So let me just take you through it. I just mentioned that it's all about people. So as we do digital transformation, as we do, as we harness technologies, why can't we make people also happy? Why can't they join that journey? We uplift them, we empower them and we make them happy participants in this societal journey. These are actually aspiration in this deliverable. And why it matters? Because at the end of the day, as I said, we have to have this balance in the cities. As we do digital transformation, we need to make sure that people are part of it. And if they have certain concerns, there's certain issues, then we need to address them. So if you're actually delivering very good, highly technical, technology based services, AI, we talk about all these frontier technologies. This is progress. But if we have a city, a digitally well city, where people feel comfortable in using those services, then this is digital transformation. It's the real transformation that we have taken, not only on the supply side, but also on the demand side. So this is all about the demand side in general, striking that balance in general. And it's about sustainability. If you look at SDG three, Sustainable Development Goal Number Three, it's all about health and well-being, good health and well-being. And digital well-being, digital well-being is all about how people feel, how their health is impacted mentally, emotionally and also physically when they use digital systems. So it's not digital health. We're not trying to do healthcare through digital means. This is about the people's well-being when they use these digital systems. Do they feel stressed? Do they feel anxious? And and when we talk about sustainability, sometimes we tend to emphasize the environmental side, the planet or the economic side, the prosperity. But we cannot sustain a city if the people, if the people are not happy, if they don't feel part of it. So it's a very much the people, it's very much the people's side of sustainability at the end of the day, pertaining to digital digital issues in general. So what's digital well-being? As I said, it's how digital interactions affect our mental, physical and emotional health. And it's a very subjective issue. I want to set the scene right up front that this is not an objective issue, but it's a subjective issue. Myself might be using a certain digital, let's say, service and I might feel comfortable. I have the skills, I have a good connection. I am perfectly fine with it. Another person that probably does not have the right skills might feel very anxious and would be stressed when he or she uses these digital services. So digital well-being, just like the general well-being, is a subjective issue. That's a that's a very, that's what that's what makes it actually all about people at the end of the day. So we, there might be positive connotations or there might be negative connotations when people use these services. And the well-being framework basically is made up of three core dimensions. We try to capture almost everything pertaining to a person using these digital transformation services. The first one is during the usage itself. The perception, the influence is actually what the person uses. So it could be an online banking, it could be mobility service, it could be any kind of city service provided to them. How they perceive it as they use it is the first dimension. The second dimension is the environment that they are in. This environment doesn't mean the physical environment, but are there certain regulations, policies, support provided for people? If they encounter scams, if they encounter cyber physical, cyber security issues, can they address it? This is the second item, actually, this is the second dimension. The digital environment that they are in, do they feel safe? Do they feel trust as they use these services? Which is the first one that we looked at. Second one is all about this environment. And the third one is the individual himself or herself. Let me go to the next slide, actually, I think that explains the subcomponents much better. So the first one is while using the service, the service is accessible to the person or not. If I'm a person with disabilities, I might not be able to use the service and I wouldn't feel right about it. I'm not going to go through every item, but you can see that we have tried to capture as much as we can. While I'm using the digital service, is it responding effectively? Do I get disconnected? I did a maybe credit card transaction, my credit card got deducted, but I didn't get the service itself. So this is all about the actual service, the first one. The second one is the environment that we are in, as I mentioned earlier. Do we have connectivity at the city level? Can people even connect? Are we in an environment where people have connectivity? Can they be part of it? Do they have the skills, the availability of skills trainings? Do they have digital safety in general? I mentioned cybersecurity, but others also. Can I, for example, if I encounter an issue, can I call someone for help? This is all about the environment. And the third one is the people themselves. Do they have the right skills? Can they afford, can they afford the digital, for example, devices to access these systems? Can they afford connectivity? And also the tools that are available for them. So these are all people issues, these are not, these are not service-related, these are not digital services, these are all issues pertaining to people. And by, so this is a framework that identifies those issues. And we looked at, in fact, globally, one of the humble observations that we reached is that there is no global framework in the world. This is number one. Number two, when you look at issues that address people, let's say, concerns in the world, they are very much siloed. There is a screen time issue and there is a solution for it. In some cases, for example, parents complain about their kids and there is a toolkit for them. And, you know, they, they help their kids, for example, to have safe access to internet-based services. So it's all fragmented, there is not a comprehensive, an all-encompassing approach when it comes to people issues. And that has been the observation, looking at all these benchmarks, they are all fragmented. And addressing a very almost point area. We've done case studies, and even in the case studies, you're going to see that they are again point-almost solutions to certain problems, but not the comprehensive one. Now, what we are saying, actually, what we are saying in this deliverable is that now that we know, we have identified the list of people issues, let's in the first step assess them at the city level. We can do surveys, we can do interviews with, with real people in the cities and try and address them. Where are the real issues? Out of the framework that I showed, not every area has major gaps. But what are those gaps that people? And then based on that, we take an action, we prioritize improvement areas and allocate resources for it. Because as a public sector, we have limited resources. So where do we allocate the limited resources we have? To help people issues so we can balance the digital transformation at the society level. I hope I'm not confusing you. And then finally, you know, we implement them and then evaluate and complete the loop back. In Dubai, in fact, we have taken digital well-being quite seriously because, as you know, we're, we're, let's say, almost crunching out a lot of digital services, harnessing technologies, using them. But we need to also look at the people's side, we realized. And we have used this exact same framework and conducted a comprehensive survey at the city level with residents. And out of maybe forty-six, I think, items, if I remember correctly, that we had, we were able to prioritize the top five or top seven that we need to address. I can tell you that, for example, connectivity is not an issue for us. And that came out in the survey, people said the same thing to us. Because we are well-connected, you know, we have more than one hundred percent penetration in mobile and fixed, in blah blah. But when it comes to certain services, certain segments in the society, they indicated their concerns to us. So now we can go back, and the first thing that we did, actually, we immediately published a toolkit for kids and parents. Because they said, we don't know how to control our kids online. And another issue that came up, we're looking at it, is screen time, as you can imagine. So this allows us to prioritize and address people issues. So it's a bit of a theoretical maybe stuff that I went through, but it's very, very practical and very pragmatic that can be done at the city level. So what are some of the policy levers? These are just ideas, we're not saying that every city should do that. But if, if, if the cities want to identify and address these issues, maybe they can, they can establish a position like a chief digital well-being officer, a role. An existing role can also be enriched. We're not saying necessarily create an organization, but at least somehow to look at it from the people's side and integrate these assessments in the overall transformation approach that cities take. So it's not just about technology, it's not just about the people-centric issues that I mentioned. Those are on the provider side, on the supply side. But the demand side, the people's side is also extremely important. They can develop a people-centered focus charter, using the framework that I had shown earlier, combining it with this one also. So the cities almost lead to the fact that we will address people issues in the city. And we can also incentivize private sector collaboration. Frankly, if you talk to private sector, they will help the cities to address some of these issues because it's in their benefit also. If you think about it, the private sector wants to sustain digital transformation. So if the people are not, are not abiding by the digital transformation, it's in both the public sector's and private sector's interest to address these issues. So I'm not going to probably talk about all these other issues here, but to make it really people-centered, I think these two frameworks can be used together in conjunction with the technology solutions that we provide to the cities. With that, I'm going to stop, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Okan, for those insightful reflections on how cities can embed well-being and inclusivity at the core of the digital journeys. But those journeys are not only from technological solutions that you provided, but also the opportunities. And I think you stress the term opportunity. And as we all know, there is no one-size-fits-all solution. These opportunities can help them to be, to use all those behavioral economics and society and then social sciences, solutions that we all have in various tools. And we heard before, plus a thousand universities, industries and partners that are involved. So the background is wonderful, thank you for doing this one, this work. Up next, we are really thrilled to hear from Rami, who will introduce the new publication, Building Digital Public Infrastructure for Cities and Communities, which lays out practical steps for developing interoperable, secure and trusted foundations for digital transformation. Rami, the floor is yours, as soon as I give you the microphone.
Thank you, Barbara, it's really, really a pleasure. Really a pleasure. All right, so guys, now I made sure that I started my timer so that I would finalize in time. It's really a pleasure and honor. Peshawna to me is a magnificent city, it's a beautiful city. And thank you for the invitation and thank you for the opportunity actually to also present one of the most recent outputs or deliverables that have been developed under the EUPHORSSC flagship projects or thematic group, which is called DPI for Cities, Digital Public Infrastructure for Cities. My name is Rami Ahmed Fatim. I'm with the Egyptian government, I work in the cybersecurity domain, but I'm also very active in the smart, sustainable cities front for more than ten, fifteen years ago. I've been engaged with the ITU almost for more than twenty years now. I've been lucky to work with really the top, best, best people in the industry. Of course, experts in the ITU, Christina, Bilal and Okan and all those wonderful colleagues. So why am I here? We have all heard about digital public infrastructure, DPI. It's a, it's a new thing, very sexy these days, everybody's talking about DPI, DPI. The idea, I think, it has been floating around for a couple of years now. I think one of the G20 meetings in India, or even before that, the concept has been circulating as the solution to all our problems. You know, how things work, a new concept pops up and then suddenly everybody's talking about a DPI, et cetera, et cetera. The core idea behind DPI is simple. Simply reuse existing common commonalities, common systems or common platforms or common components inside your digital transformation ecosystem, like reusable code, to lay it in plain English. Simply if you unified or reused common components in your digital infrastructure and you opened it up for public use as a DPG, as a digital public good, then the fundamental premise to achieve sustainable digital transformation at scale, all your problems would be solved, voila, that's it. And the agenda was usually promoted by policymakers who are working on the federal level. Usually we're talking about CIT or ministries or cabinets or secretaries for communication information technology, those guys who are very active and strong in the government, who are strong with the digital transformation agenda, who have the responsibility to do that, to implement that. That was the fundamental idea. And then what is DPIs, guys? Well, it's simple, basically three key components. You need to have digital identity systems. I mean, how can you provide digital transformation services if you don't have a digital ID? If I can't identify you, how can I deliver good services to you actually, right? The second important component, well, there is no service for free, you know, that there is no free lunch. The key idea of computer science, nothing is for free. I mean, even if you use some of the platforms, AI models, et cetera, for free, maybe, in some open source models. But actually, what you don't realize is that you are actually the commodity, you are the data, you are the product. But anyway, that's a, that's a different point. So second key component was digital payment, as you can imagine. You needed a platform or a component, a common component across your digital transformation ecosystem to enable digital payments, right? So you identified the person online, you enabled monetary transactions in order to facilitate trade and to facilitate digital services. And the third component, can you guess? What do you need? Data, a data exchange component. And then we stopped here. And the industry started to, well, voila, we have three points. We need to implement this at a national scale, at a federal level, and everybody's happy. Well, to our surprise, that was not the case. There were still challenges. What are the challenges? As we can, of course, as we heard from Okan and the distinguished speakers in the opening session, there are key chronic challenges at the city level. Cities are still facing climate change, climate change and environmental degradation pressures, yes. We are still experiencing massive urbanization, sprawl, uncontrolled sprawl. We are still facing economical challenges, right? Everybody's now asked, I mean, even in particular in developing countries, in Egypt, for example, well, we usually ask the mayors, sustain yourself, develop programs, develop systems, develop services in order, you know, to keep yourself moving up. Everybody is experiencing one form of a squeeze here and there. So budget is, again, is one issue. And of course, fourth component, and Dr. Okan, he was that marvelous report on the digital well-being, is the idea of inclusivity, people-centricity. Where is the people, where is the demand? Ten years, fifteen years back, the key idea behind digital transformation and broadband, back then, we called it broadband plans, I remember. I mean, I, we were, I was one of those people who were, you know, pushing the broadband plan at the national level. And I remember that we brought top minds from different parts of the world. We commissioned the World Bank, we brought several experts here and there, and we worked with really the best. What was the key narrative? Two ideas, build it and it will come, build the infrastructure and it will come. That's one idea. And then the second wave, well, no, 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 you need supplies. In addition to the supply-side initiatives, you need demand-side initiatives. What are demand-side initiatives? Well, ease-of-use is one part of it, affordability is another part of it. And obviously, content and content creation, et cetera, right? Marvelous. Well, we've done all that. Governments have a veiled spectrum, a veiled infrastructure, a veiled subsidies. Companies have been promised, and we're still providing this promise, we're trying, we're doing our best. We develop regulatory frameworks, legal frameworks that would enable the companies to compete. Competition means better services, higher quality means a level playing field whereby everybody can invest and get, of course, his ROI, right? But even with all those nice and good and sound policies in place, we still have 2.6 billion people on the face of our planet that are not connected. My gosh, then there's something wrong with it, right? Supply side and demand side is not working all together, what's wrong there? And talking with, I mean, discussing with economists, well, a new term emerged. It's called absorptive capacity. The missing glue was that the supply-side initiatives and the demand-side initiatives needed something in between. And that's something in between, we call it absorptive capacity, is the ability of the society and the company and the economy, the economical actors, to translate what they have in, what they have in hand in terms of supply-side assets and transform them into production or productive outputs. And that means that on the institutional level, you need capabilities, you need awareness, you need skills. And then a third pillar somehow emerged. I'm here to advocate that DPI, if it is done right, if it is done with the city's involvement from the very start, from the outset, would be the operationalization, the operationalization arm to implement the so-called idea of the absorptive capacity, the middleware between supply and demand. And if it is done using a top-down approach, as has been the latest narrative over the past few years, it will not work. It has to combine top-down with bottom-up initiative, it has to come with the feelings. How are we going to do that? We're going to do that using a mix of viewpoints, very specific viewpoints that combine different elements linked to sustainability. If you combine viewpoints associated with environmental aspects, resilience, inclusion, gender equality. I mean, we have counted eight specific viewpoints. We made an effort to try to analyze the twenty UN agency supporting the EUPHORSSC. That effort led to That effort led to the development of eight lenses, eight specific viewpoints, all linked to multiple perspectives with the UN agencies backing this initiative. I mean, from tourism to mobility, to inclusivity, to security, to safety. I mean, I can't remember them all. It's all in the report now. But the point is, if we implemented DPI right, we would achieve digital trust. Trust is very important. When we were analyzing what is a trustworthy system? I mean, what is what what is trust anyway? How would you trust a particular system or a particular service? If I told you, well, trust me, would you? Oh, no, no, please, trust me. Why would you trust me? Why would you trust the system? And when we try to analyze what we would like to call the antecedence of trust, the key ingredients of that concept, break it down, what is it? We found out, and this has been work of, you know, the UFO SSC is very, I mean, multi-stakeholder indeed. Yes, we have ICT experts, but we also have several experts from different backgrounds, from social sciences. I mean, I have a psychiatrist. I mean, I I I have no idea why on earth he was interested in DPI for cities. But actually, he brought very, very good perspectives. Again, trust. Trust has two key components, two key ingredients. One common ingredient is called the affective trust. It's linked to the heart, your feelings. And there is the cognitive trust. It links to the mind. For the affective trust component, it's very interesting. It is said from the studies that a truster, a person who trusts, would be in a better position, more inclined. We call this inclination propensity of trust. The inclination for the truster to trust the trustee depends on several aspects. First, if the truster believes. How are we going on the town? Yeah? I have to move forward. I have to move forward. I will finish this point and move quickly. If if the truster believes in the values of the trustee. I'm a company. If I share your values and I made it clear, plain and clear, I share your values. I believe in inclusivity. I believe in people centricity. I believe in technology for good. I believe in human rights. I believe in this, I believe in that. You would be in a better position to trust me, to trust your system, to trust my system. However, if there's an internal belief that this system brought to you by this actor or by this service provider or by this jurisdiction works with a different value system, not even in a hundred years, you would trust it. This is one example of one of the components. On the cognitive trust, there is the issue of capability. Do you believe that this system or this person is capable? I mean, technically capable? Can he do it? Would you go, would you go to a doctor or a physician if, if he's not, I mean, if he's not smart? Absolutely not. So the point is, DPI, if it is done right with the proper components, which are open, secure, transparent, blah, 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 blah. If it is done right with people's intensity at its heart, you would achieve digital trust. And you would achieve inclusion. And ultimately, of course, you would achieve inclusion. That's what we are hoping to achieve. The global context, we all know the GDC, Pact for the Future and the Global Digital Compact. We believe that DPI for cities and the UFO SSC are the operationalization arm to implement the Pact for the Future and the Global Digital Combat to develop free, secure and human-centered future. The DPI framework document that had been developed by the thematic group DPI for cities presented a roadmap for leaders. E four pillars. First, it can achieve service access and equity. DPI definitely makes services accessible to all residents, including marginalized groups. It ensures that really no one is left behind. Think of a system whereby common factors or common components, including identity systems, of course, including digital payments, including other, for example, registries for social services. A registry for social services, if it has been included in your DPI narrative, if it has been properly planned and integrated within your additional transformation strategy, then that could be a key enabler to achieve service access and equity. You need to have efficient and responsive governance in place. We all know that AI and and digital systems depends on data. And earlier, Dr. Okan was speaking about the importance of ethics and the integration of the people and societal sides. Ten days ago, there was a UN treaty that was being signed in Vietnam on cybercrime. I've been there. I'm also active in the criminal justice space. And I have to tell you that you shouldn't wait for the problem to come. You should anticipate and develop the level of policies, laws, regulations that would allow your digital systems to thrive. Resilience and trust, of course, and digital innovation. There is no need to go into these details. So what DPI delivers? What do we promise? We promise efficiency and responsiveness, inclusion, equity, transparency, innovation, innovation growth, resilience and sustainability. Remember, what do you need? You need innovation? Yeah. You need innovation. You need management processes and you need ICT and you need a political will to implement all that. These are several successful stories from different parts of the world. We will not get into details. And obviously, I have covered more or less key ideas that I wanted to share with you. Am I good on the time, Barbara, I think? Yeah, almost. But thank you very much.
A warm applause to to Rami. I would say the multifaceted approaches that you brought us here today. I mean, not only for me as an economist, by bringing all that scarce resources, budgets, supply-side economics, policies, all those things. And of course, sometimes that markets are not functioning or not incomplete or imperfect. Thanks for mentioning all that. I think those DPIs are a good basis for whatever we as city managers or as people who work with citizens need. So gentlemen, again, thank you for those wonderful presentations. And Okan, thank you again for pushing our work so hard. As I mentioned before, it's not just the big working group. It's many, many, many working groups that collaborate, that coordinate. And with this coordination, I think we get to the best. And Christina is is coordinating those groups in a way that, I mean, not only she's pushing them all hard, to have to say, she's managing all those teams in a way that gets those results in a way that is very efficient, very effective. Because, and then I will close and hand over to you. It's easy ex post. But what the team does is not, is ex ante. And it's the art of bringing the visions that the team of ITU and everybody involved has to reality and to create tangible added value, create tangible added value for the citizens, for the individuals and for all groups involved. And I think those are the best things that have come out of UFO SSC over the past years. And it's it's great to have everybody here. So questions to the two gentlemen? Please.
I'll just very briefly introduce myself. So my name is Bas Borsma and I'm co-chairing the newly created Working Group for Digital Development Goals for Cities. Rami, first of all, thank you for a very lively and empathic type of presentation, very nicely done. I come from that era too, and I come from broadband too. And we started in the early 2000s, in fact. It's almost now a quarter of a century journey. There was the supply side, demand side, how do you encourage that? But with hindsight, you look back at all of those chapters and you feel that those two were never enough. But it's not just the great factors that you did introduce here, but also if cities were more bound to future foresight practices, you would think differently about the type of bandwidth that is publicly needed and needs to be publicly guaranteed. So think of COVID. When that happened, it was a game changer. And all the people that regarded themselves as part of what was called the fiber Taliban of the early 2000s because of being so radical on the broadband propositions, were saying, shall we now buy the T-shirt that says, that says, I told you so? Had we had the future foresight practices, we would have made different decisions. Redundancy is simply something that's very often overlooked when it comes to just balancing the supply side, demand side discussion. If you now think of war coming to your country, if you think of the next pandemic coming to your country, you're going to make different decisions on your infrastructure. So I think that's an element. I I'm new to the UN universe, if you will, so I haven't read your report yet. But I hope that there is some space for that. Like, how do you actually go more top-down on a number of things that you potentially must?
Thank you, Rami.
Very quickly. Yeah, thank you. That's a marvelous question. I think you touched upon upon a very important point. I mean, who actually can anticipate what happens next year? I mean, look at the geopolitical scene over here, here and there, and all those challenges. I mean, we've also heard that there is a new pandemic coming on this, on the ground, right? The point is, now, on the institutional level, and this is genuinely from the heart. I mean, not all countries are the same, not all jurisdictions are the same. Some are advanced, they have advanced ecosystems, foresight capabilities. Some some are not, others are not. What would be the solution? The solution is an international framework, a framework whereby if we all agreed here, and the beauty about it is that it should and it must be bottom-up. It has to come from the cities, it has to come from the people. If we all believe that sustainability is not a nice chart whereby, well, you report your ESGs and, well, I'm good. The level of carbon dioxide levels are decreasing by the year. It's not about that. It's about how you engage your people, your communities, your societies through different instruments, different mechanisms that would ensure safety, inclusivity, co-creation, but yet national security. And that's why you need to balance the inclination for states to protect national interests, to protect supply chains. And on the same side, enable through innovative ecosystems, research and development, trade and other measures in the report. Please have a look at it and send me your feedback. I would love, I would love to. I think that's that's a starting point. And by the way, this was only the framework document. We have five different working groups working together with us. Leaders are from different parts of the world. I mean, we have Ronaldo from Brazil, leading regulatory work. China, India on security, stuff, architecture is led by Germany. And these are not all government agencies. I mean, Germany, it's a consulting firm, it's a private company and so on and so on. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I hand over to Kiara now. But I have to say, since you mentioned that, first of all, external shocks can always happen. There is no such thing as full information. And as the recent Nobel laureates in economics have told us, institutions are a good thing and they need to be challenged as well and built with us together. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to our moderator and to our speakers. So I just wanted to remind you that all UFO SSC deliverables are freely available online. So euphorussc.itu.in t, very easy to remember. So up next, our next keynote speaker is Ms. Irene Kagwa Sewam Kambo, Giga Program Manager at ITU, who will share perspective, perspectives on connecting schools, communities and opportunities through the Giga Initiative. Please welcome Ms. Irene.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Yes. That should be better. After all those presentations, I feel like I'm now going to what was being challenged to say that demand side of it. So for many of us in this room, I always use the example, if I put a jamming device in here, within a few minutes, the room would likely be empty because we're so used to being online. Today, we talk about all these interesting technologies that are coming up like AI and the benefits of it. We're talking about smart cities and all that is possible. I always remember looking back, having been part of the ITU from the other side of the table, the journey that we have moved. But the reality is, guess what? 2.6, this morning, we had 2.8 people who don't have houses. 2.6 billion people are still offline. And many of these are women and the youth or children. So when we also look at the schools, because for many people, it may be a challenge, depending on the kind of home they have, to have a device at home. And when COVID hit, that was when the reality for every country came in. I visited Philippines recently and I thought Uganda had suffered a bad one because my children lost the whole year of school. In Philippines, it was a whole two years of education that was lost. And yet, in other parts of the world, continuity of education was a guaranteed because they just transferred to online classes. So when we come to look at this in terms of even when we talk about smart cities, it's easy to think everybody in the town has access. But the reality is, we also have unserved or understaffed people in within the urban towns that we're looking at. So in our case, as as Giga, Giga is this initiative that was established by the ITU and UNICEF. And you might wonder, what's the connection? ITU, as you've heard from my colleagues, first Bilal, Christine, we look at ensuring no one is left behind. How do we get everyone to enjoy the benefits of digital transformation? And UNICEF talks about child rights. So together, we're looking at how do we ensure every child has an opportunity, has a choice and has access to information. And we seek to ensure that education is a gateway for this. So as Giga, what do we do? We don't have lots of money that will come in and solve all the problems, provide the computers, provide the funding, but we assist the governments instead in terms of providing them technical support. So we look at four key pillars, that's smart mapping, modeling, finance and contracting. And I was happy to hear from Okan the similarity in terms of what we look at in terms of the pillars. So when we come to mapping, I come from Uganda originally. And if you ask me at school, I'll tell you best on the village because we don't have a national addressing system. So when you ask for coordinates, they'll likely say, oh, this person is being too technical, too much work. So we go in and work with the Ministry of Education to improve their information management, have them geolocate every school so that you can map it. When you know, you know the situation, you're able to identify the problem. So we then go into modeling where we look and say, as you heard from Bilal and Christine, ITU has 194 countries as member states. And each of that, those countries already has some level of connectivity. So we don't seek to reinvent that will. We look at other schools. We look at other schools covered within the existing footprint. And if they are not, how can we leverage existing infrastructure? And if that's not the ideal, what other technology solutions can be utilized to address the connectivity of those? When it comes to financing, Okan did that. Great job for me. He solved my problem. Because that's exactly what we do. We look and say, not every country has the finances. Some may be able to allocate the budgets from their national resources. Others have set up universal service funds. But others need to look at other development partners. Are you looking at DFIs, those development finance institutions? Are you looking at getting a loan elsewhere, maybe even for commercial banks? Or come up with domestic innovative financing approaches? For example, in what country we're trying out bonds, it will be interesting to see how that works. Then having worked that out, so again, going back to the modeling, one of the key issues that we always look at is integrated planning. So from our modeling, when we provide that connectivity for each of those schools in terms of what they should, what is required to connect them, we also do a cost analysis. What's the cost? It's not enough to tell me these are the options, but what is going to be the cost of that? Because this is what the governments are looking to. So finally, in contracting, we're looking and saying, many of the, of the procurements that we have seen around, can we have procurement of connectivity? We've done procurement of pencils, vaccines through UNICEF, now connectivity. Governments tend to find themselves in a disadvantaged position because sometimes they don't know. Or they are not practicing good practices that then push away private sector from participating in these procurement processes. So we seek to again, help the governments with tools and good practices to help them improve that process. And of course, when you look at that, that whole methodology, we're talking about schools. And now, within this forum, we're talking about smart cities. So if you're connecting maybe hospitals, public libraries, public access points, so like Wi-Fi hotspots or any other facilities, even government institutions, you can still use this methodology. So as a result, we seek to build the capacity in countries so that we're not consultants or perpetual consultants as Giga, would want to see the own people carry this forward and be able to implement their digital transformation agenda. So where are we now? We're not yet in the 194 countries, but we're moving. So we have 45 countries that are already engaged. We don't impose ourselves on countries, we want them to opt in. So we require that the Ministry of Education in each country and the ICT part of government opt in jointly into this initiative. So in 45 of the countries, that has been completed. In 28, we're in that journey. It is indeed a journey, but we're optimistic and hope that we'll have more of that map colored in terms of people we're working with. So what has been the impact of Giga? One of the interesting ones, I came from the other side of the table, having worked in a regulator and Rami sitting in those boardrooms for many years. So I thought I had seen it all. And then found this interesting concept where a school set up a Baba shop to be able to get extra money to finance their school connectivity. And then through Giga, again, we gave them guiders or proposed to them a model that they embraced. And the farmers in the community decided to finance the school connectivity for the schools in their place. Recently, my colleague Ivan was there and he brought us pictures where I know they've gone another level and they're doing pastries. Of course, I'd be a good customer of that. In Rwanda, we found that through again, demand aggregation and streamlining of the procurement, because you find that in some cases, because of the lack of information, a government has contracted more than one operator covering the same place, causing inefficiencies. But also through demand aggregation, they were able to negotiate better deals that reduce the price of connectivity by 50% to the schools. And for many of these schools, sustainability is the issue. They get someone who comes in and finances the capital cost. One year, the pictures are taken and beautiful, the school is connected. One year down the road, it's not connected because they couldn't afford it. So affordability, and again, this I know came up in the previous presentations, in terms of why it's important to address the issues of affordability. Giga has also gained recognition over the years as a good practice and a stepping stone. Most recent was the last year in the Global Dictor Compact, where it was recognized in making the commitments that we could build onto the approach by Giga to connect all schools and hospitals to the internet by 2030. I'll quickly go through Brazil as a case study because many times it doesn't look clear, how does it, how does Giga fit into this national development planning? So Brazil is one of those countries that has significantly achieved success in terms of its connectivity of schools. And where Giga came in is to help them map and do that process, the methodology that we talked about, working with their municipalities to identify what is the need, where is the need exactly? So that when they then design their auction process and their obligations, these are informed by data that makes it more contextualizing. And many times, operators tell us, just tell us where to connect. Just, just help us and tell the government to make up their minds and tell us where to connect. So this is one of the key examples where this has been done. We've also had a number of local workshops to make sure that again, on the ground, that capacity is bought. Now, when you look at the success that has been achieved in, in Brazil, all those green spots, the dots on that map, indicate that those are schools that have been connected. And the red ones are the ones that are yet to be connected. So when you look at the difference, if I was to put the rest of the countries up, you'd notice how much this approach has actually assisted the Brazilian government to be able to advance their school connectivity process. And again, as you see, when it comes to planning inclusion, digital inclusion that we're talking about with the municipalities, this becomes a key opportunity to springboard and achieve success. I mentioned this earlier, so I won't go through it again. Where are we located? So I wish I could say that whole building is a beautiful office, but we just have one floor on there. Our headquarters are in Geneva. We're not at the ITU headquarters because we want to co-create with our counterparts. But we're not only co-creating with UNICEF, we are co-creating with all partners who have a relation in terms of digital transformation, school connectivity, to make sure that we run together and run further. This beautiful building located here in Barcelona is like a workshop, for lack of a better word. So we do develop open source tools that we help the governments with. We know that in policy and regulation, tools, the tools are expensive because the market is smaller. So we tend to develop the open source tools that facilitate the governments to springboard in terms of this connectivity. So apparently, this is an, an old cotton industry that was now transformed into offices. And Giga is happily hosted in there, Cacze, the city of Barcelona. We also have some associated programs. So we had earlier in terms of the importance of affordability, innovation and inclusion, and we also haven't run away from that. So we know that we can't do it by ourselves. So the Digital Infrastructure Investment Initiative is one of the platforms that was established, where we came together with the DFIs to establish how can digital investment be achieved? It's, one of the successes is we got all the seven DFIs on the table, which is unusual. But we also got other private sector and other partners on board to identify what needs to be done. And this has also fed into the G20 process, fast with the Brazilian presidency and more recently with the South African presidency in terms of the digital economic working group. We also have the Giga Accelerator Program that's currently running. We selected 10 companies, it's a inaugural one, where we're getting innovators to come up with what are the solutions? Not only tech solutions, but business models. What is it that can be done to make sure school connectivity is achieved effectively and sustainably? Not just economically, not just environmentally, but in all aspects human-centric as well. The Giga Knowledge Park is a recent one where we're tapping into academia. So this year, we have started by looking at a small pilot with only seven universities in Switzerland. But what we want to do is expand it globally. That how do we tap into academia and research? For many years, we've been talking about digital transformation. But the fact that all those tools that we talk about are not working speaks to something. So we need to step back and study, what are we doing or what are we saying that's not working? And we seek to use this approach of persons who are not practicing directly to look on from the outside and evaluate and come up with new ideas on how we can ensure we achieve universal school connectivity. So in terms of where would we want to go? Again, this is the Connecting Humanity Report that was done through the Digital Infrastructure Investment Group. Again, you're welcome to look at it. It came up with a framework, an assessment framework that can be used to look at a country to establish what are those barriers? Not a global, one shoe fits all, but how do we go into each country to make sure it's context relevant? I was trying to rush through to make sure that Christina doesn't get upset with me that she gave me the opportunity to talk and I overspelled. But I hope I have tickled your appetite enough and really looking forward to working with all of you to make sure we achieve inclusive digital transformation and especially connect every child, every school across the world to the internet and have education as a gateway for information, access, and opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Irene. So now we will go for a very, very short coffee break. So we'll have around, I guess, five, well, seven minutes? Seven minutes? 10 minutes of break? Yes, so we will have around 10 minutes of break. So I kindly invite you to come back at around 11:45, 15. See you.
Eleven cities under EuroCities' frame, umbrella. So it will be a pleasure to share with you this idea and also collect from you views or questions that arise. So let us start with EDIC, City vs EDIC on Local Digital Twins. And after many times presenting EDIC, I have realized that the best way is by saying that EDIC is not a project. EDIC is the legal framework already established as a legal entity. Yesterday was presented together with Ernesto, who is here attending the meeting as a chair. And we had the opportunity to present to the community the new director of EDIC with a picture moment together with the chair and the Netherlands representatives. I mean, for the reason I starting the presentation, saying that EDIC is not a project. EDIC is from long-term vision with the purpose to create an ecosystem able to help cities and countries in developing multi-country projects. The thematic areas, because there are a lot of EDICS, Local Digital Twins is one of them, where the thematic area is as a definition of Local Digital Twins. I think it's not needed for you to know what is digital twins, but just to frame a very easy definition. The virtual representation of the assets in the city and the process around them with the capacity to provide to the city planners with tools able to simulate and make predictions. So this is our definition of digital twins in EDIC. And as an entity, let me picture this important point. So the legal entity is already established. We are on board now fourteen member states and two or three member states are considering to join, but is not yet official. So we cannot say who they are, but we are growing. And the idea is to build, taking into account what is already existing, avoiding repetitions and building economies of scale. And not also as a deputy chair of Local Digital Twins, but also, sorry, because I have realized now that I didn't present myself. I'm Jordi from Barcelona City Council, Innovation Directorate, Deputy Chair of EDIC on Local Digital Twins and also Co-chair of Monitoring and Lord DMS, a tool for measuring digital transition in cities. So coming back to the presentation. From city point of view, there is something that also many times worries us about the pilots. What happens in cities after deploying a pilot? What remains in our cities when we are finishing the deploying of pilots? And this is one of the reasons that we, Barcelona City, are in this consortium from the beginning together with Valencia, who is hosting the EDIC. It was one of the main reasons to be there. So investing time and money in something that will remain in our cities without thinking only in the pilots. So we started two years ago with this idea. We presented the notification to the Commission with a technical description, the statutes. It was, yes, we were seven member states. Today we are fourteen member states on board. We celebrated the General Assembly in Valencia in December of the past year. And now in 2025, we are already working in a project. In this case, this is a project, the build project that built us to set up the project, the build project. In the present year, we have created a working group in order to work in the same way that EDIC will work from now, because we already have our director. And just providing you an idea to frame what is the purpose of EDIC. So EDIC, as I have said at the beginning of my presentation, is not a project, but also is not only a platform. It's a digital ecosystems where we are trying to create solid ecosystems. taking advantage of the digital assets that already exist in you as digital space. At CICOM, when we can, we want to test AI facilities. Lord Dimas as a toolbox that allows you to measure what use you are, maturity level in your cities. So the purpose is to deploy digital twins among countries and sectors inside the city in a smooth and in a easy way. I'm sorry, something is... So we need to imagine EDIC as a part of a bigger ecosystem where others' digital assets are used or promoted, so because we are building this digital ecosystem. EDIC is not a project, EDIC is not only a platform, is a digital ecosystem focused in the deployment of digital twins. As I said just yesterday, we have the honor to present in public our directors. So EDIC is today a reality, is not just a vision or a project, is already running. So this is the first part of my presentation and please ask at the end of this presentation if you have some doubt and moving on to the second part of the digital twins. This is a key component in Barcelona when thinking how to deploy digital twins in an easy way. So I'm going to start sharing with you this idea, step by step. I'm sure that I'm not discovering anything new for you, but what I want to share is this, the cross-sectoral view as a city point of view, having in mind the deployment, the city service, and the deployment in digital twins in an easy way. Because at the end, we as a cities, we are delivering services and digital twins is our tool to deliver these services. So imagining, imagine that we have the lowest level on digital twins, that is static. You have a very good and accurate representation of the city, many times in three dimensions, but nothing is moving, it's static. If we go deeper in this digital material, we have a dynamic. In this case, we have this picture, but you can see what happens in the city, what people is moving, how goods are distributed in the city. So in this case, you need real time. And now I am starting approaching the digital infrastructure that is the purpose of this slide. So at this point, you have an operational vision about what is happening in your city. Moving forward, predictive, your system is able to see what will happen because you have the history and so on. And the highest level of digital twins will be predictive, so you are able to see not only what will happen, but also the system can provide you some idea and recommendation, providing you a strategic vision. So and it will be what we could say, the digital twins maturity level from technological point of view. And now, and the value of this matrix is, let's cross the necessities of each sector according to digital maturity levels. So last example, we have mobility, transport, traffic management, waste management, energy, green spaces, this is just an example. So and we could agree, so all of them, we have what we call the digital twins matrix, covering both ambitions, the technological perspective and sectoral point of view. So we could, we could agree that if you are thinking as a city in an easy deployment, because under the idea that not everyone needs the highest level, because you need to deploy step by step. So we could agree that all the sectors can be provided with the lowest maturity level, static, with a very good picture of the city. And thinking in the highest level, we could agree that mobility due to necessities of real time and prediction will be the sector who needs the highest level of digital twins, maturity level. And depending on the city, because this is just an example, the rest of this work, you can deploy according necessities and priorities. There is an important point that to me and many colleagues we shared, that probably the biggest challenge in digital twins is to have this cross-sectoral vision. So what happens when waste management is working in the city and what is the impact in urban mobility? Because many times, at least in big cities, we already have vertical digital twins in the sense that we are able to simulate traffic scenarios, but what we lack is this transversal vision. We are not able still to know what happens in waste management with urban mobility. We have a traffic congestion on another way. And there is an example, yes, before go to the next slide. There is an example that probably some of you already have heard, because it's an example that I think makes the vision or the purpose of this matrix. So an example, but I haven't had find other better. But the idea is for urban mobility planners, they don't need probably to have traffic lights represented in three dimensions. If you have it, it's better, but it's not needed. What they need, what they really need is to be connected in real time and with the capacity to make simulations and predictions. So this is from the lowest to the highest maturity level. And in other sign, in green spaces, the trees in the city doesn't need to be connected in real time as a highest maturity level, but if you have it represented in three dimensions, it's better because you can, you can see how the volume is growing and probably is not, you cannot see the tree, no? Because they are shedding. So this is, this is the purpose of this matrix with this idea. I, next. I presented this idea by the end of the last year in EuroCities Digital Forum. It was very well ranked by eleven cities and we started to work with this idea, to go deeper with this idea of matrix. And this is the timeline that maybe it's not needed to go into detail now. The digital twins, this deliverable that was, the idea of this deliverable is rather to go... So there is a lot already written of digital twins, but the purpose is to write just in forty or forty-two pages for the people who is not familiar in digital twins, political level or managers at the highest level, to know what is needed to have in mind when deploying digital twins. And for the reason, the deliverable has only forty pages, so not everything is explained in this deliverable. It could be naive that to think that in forty pages you are able to provide this approach, but with being ambitious in the scope, but without giving deeper, we delivered this guideline for developing digital twins that as far as I know, they are not still available only if you are a member of EuroCities, but I think that very soon will be available. And we are facing the idea that I was expressing at the beginning with different angles, the definition of digital twins, the maturity level, also the citizen perspective, because in this matrix, we were only considered the technological and the sectoral point of view, but we forgot to put the citizens in the center, that is today a necessity. So if you, if you have the opportunity to consult these guidelines, we have seen, we have developed the matrix, adding other dimensions, not only the technological and the sectoral point of view. We are also tackling the cyber security, technology perspective, training. So that is, that is all from my side. As commented with Cristina, two, one month ago, I think in Genif, it will be a pleasure to go deeper with these guidelines, that the work that we done was done by voluntary, as always happen in these cases, together with ten cities in, under EuroCities umbrella. So already to go deeper with this idea and with only, without forgetting the city necessities, the city services, the deployment, not just thinking in a theoretical idea that we need, but we are cities in our case, and thinking in the deployment. And to do it in this, in this is easy and pragmatical way that everyone can understand very easily, crossing technological resources and real needs from the sectors. That is all from my side. Maybe I have it, I make it shorter than expected, I don't know. So I don't, I haven't... Okay, so if you have some questions or comments, yes, please do it.
Yes, my name is Stefano Bonf, I'm Italian, but based in UK at Oxford and Imperial College as a researcher. We are doing the same thing in London itself. Our research group is trying to develop, we have the data, we are lucky anyhow for all London, and the idea is to build a digital twinning as a service for the citizen of London. But the idea, the problem is, of course, here in Barcelona, one of the issue is the computational aspect. Okay, we are lucky because, I know, we are involved with also with the higher performance computing. You need this power of computational and data in order to reach this objective. But what we are thinking is a little bit more over, in a way that the idea is to use the concept of interference. This means you build the platform, the tools are there. Now, how the people are involved without being expert of all these tools here? And that's what we are working in, carry out text test, let's say, activities. So my question is, building the digital twinning, you need an integrated approach. We need the tools, we need a platform, we need all this that today are available. And that, I think, this is what should provide it worldwide, even in undeveloping countries, they can use these tools here. That's why I support your initiative.
Thank you, thank you for your question, because I forgot to tell at the beginning of the presentation that our point of view in Barcelona, we are considering this project for four, five or six years, because this is a very big, big project. I think it's the only one project that is considering this cross-sectoral or transversal vision. So it is not only related to data that we agree that we need data. We city need to deploy sensors, telecommunications, cyber security. So data is just the tip of the iceberg, but many things should happen before in order to provide this data. And we need high-performance computer, we need this approach, that is a conceptual or theoretical approach, but also we need the IT infrastructure and the resources from city that we are providing this infrastructure. I also forgot to tell you and connecting the first point of EDIC and this view, because they are both connected. We have just launched a survey to the members that are on board in the EDIC and one of the question was based in this metric, because in EDIC at the end, what we want is to deliver a catalog of services that had been, let me say, sexy for cities to join in EDIC. Fully agree with you that this is not a project for one or two years. This is a long-term project and this is the view from EDIC perspective. In our case, in Barcelona, we are sure that we need at least five years to involve the citizens, the data and all the points that have you mentioned. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I think very nice initiative and that idea of that EDIC is beyond a system or a platform, it's an ecosystem in itself. In a sense entails perhaps an architectural change, something that would imply engagement. You said it, that of course engagement with the citizens and with the residents, that's one part of it. But I was also advocating for engagement with the ecosystem partners, companies, etc. Are you going, I mean, are you considering the API economy, enabling access to the digital twin through APIs? What are you going to do?
I forgot to do the coffee, but the lack of coffee. I forgot to say at the beginning that the main digital asset in EDIC will be what we named the toolbox, that is able to provide to the citizens from very simple and complex configurations in digital twins, providing APIs and the digital. So this technological point of view, it will be delivered, the toolbox, I think, by the end of this year. Yes, yesterday, a demo was presented in Spain, in Spain-istan. So from technological point of view, we are covering and having into account the toolbox, but also as a main digital asset, but also other assets that I'm trying to explain in this slide. The more difficult question to me is your second question, how to engage cities and partners around these digital ecosystems and make attractive to involve countries and cities? This is the work that we are doing now in build project, that is the project that allow us to build, not to build, to set up EDIC. So we have different work packages and the first work package, a part of project management, as also happens in European projects. The second project management is related to identify the service catalog and also to identify the partners that should be inside. Well, we are considering currently only countries and cities, but we will need industry and private for sure. This is not now the moment, because we are just in the beginning and Ernesto de Cercu is present in the room and I think is the next speaker. He can complement this idea, because we are just building on that. But we are fully aware of we need infrastructure, but also we need partners and we need to create a business model, because by the end, EDIC will need to be economical sustainable, sustainable. So we are, we have in mind both citizen, technology, economy, economy of the scale. So it's a very challenging, yeah.
Yes, so we have a question here. In this digital twin matrix, is the human taken into consideration? Citizen needs are gathered from sensors or in any other way?
Yes, 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 yes. This is the original matrix where we started working, but I have said, I think, if I've forgotten. The citizen perspective, so in this study, in these guidelines, you can find other matrix, including the citizen perspective. Yes, we are taking into account this, this point that was very well worked by, I think, from Utrecht. Maybe I'm wrong, but this is the collaborative work among ten cities and this citizen perspective was enriched, the matrix, the original matrix, I think from Utrecht or Brazil.
Okay, do we have any other questions? None? Okay, thank you very much Jordi for that very insightful presentation on digital twins. None? Okay. Thank you very much Jordi for that very insightful presentation on digital twins. So now, um, we move on to session two, focusing on the policies, data and artificial intelligence shaping tomorrow's cities. Our moderator for this session is Mr. Ernesto Fobil, co-leader of the Euphorous City Thematic Group on City Platforms and Data Spaces. Please welcome Ernesto and the session two speakers, uh, session two speakers. I invite you to join Ernesto on stage.
Thank you, Kiara, for your introduction. Good afternoon, welcome. I'm honored to, uh, moderate this round table with such an excellent group of panelists. And the, the session will be about tomorrow, designing tomorrow's policies, data and AI for people-centered smart cities. In this session, um, we will analyze how cities are becoming more digital. And this transformation, uh, we have, uh, for coming out this transformation, we need to put all, all our efforts hands on deck. So as to make this, uh, transition, uh, sustainable and inclusive. So these, these are two aspects that I, I would like to, to highlight. During this session, we will explore, um, policy frameworks, uh, data ecosystems. Artificial intelligence can support cities to carry out this transformation. And, uh, during this session, our speakers will present, uh, the results of different working groups, deliverables, activities that are carrying out in this, in these working groups and how, uh, these insights could, could be relevant for city officers or decision makers to, uh, improve in their, in their processes. So it's my pleasure to introduce, to introduce you the, these distinguished panelists that are Bettina Tratz Ryan, uh, leader of the working group two, uh, Euphorous City Thematic Group on enabling, enabling people-centered cities through digital transformation. Sumaya Benadu, uh, working group four leader, uh, thematic group on artificial intelligence in cities. Ramon Ferri, co-leader of this, uh, working group that we are, uh, is, uh, the session is about, uh, on city platforms and, uh, data spaces. John Smic, Smichilas, sorry for the pronunciation, uh, working group three co-leader on, in a thematic group on enabling people center, uh, the same group that, that before. And finally, replacing depot that unfortunately sick. We have with us Bas Bosma, co-chair of working group on DDGs for cities, professor of, uh, in, for urban innovation and Thunderbird School. So thank you all for being here. And now, uh, before giving you the floor, allow me to present briefly the, the, the working group by itself. Okay, now. So, uh, this thematic group formally was focused mainly on urban platforms. And now as data spaces is a, a concept that is growing in relevance. So we decided to add this, this aspect to, to this working group. So, um, we are trying to, to check how these urban, uh, data spaces and, um, city platforms can, uh, improve, uh, in this process, uh, improving the sustainability, adding innovation to improve the public services. So, uh, we are focused mainly, uh, with regards to data spaces in creating trust or providing trust, that is a very relevant aspect when we talk about, uh, data spaces, about sharing data and reducing the information, uh, different, uh, crossing different sectors. So this, the, the, the essence of the data spaces. So this will improve, uh, on the one hand, the, the, well, the decision-making processes. Because for, for, uh, with these data spaces, we will have, uh, information from different sources that will make us easier to take some decisions, uh, having information from different, from different sources, as I have said. So with this, uh, we, um, will have, uh, some aspects, uh, on the ground that are basic for, for making it happen, that are, for example, interoperability. Interoperability is a key issue for, uh, having, uh, these data spaces operative and, and providing the advantages that we expect to have from them. Governance, data governance is another layer or pillar for, for these, the data spaces. And, uh, not to mention the relevance of ethics and, uh, security for, uh, this data. Because when we are moving data around different, uh, different organizations in these platforms, uh, for sure, this will be a relevant aspect to, to keep this security as, uh, as one of the, the main aspects. With regards to urban platforms, uh, obviously we have this, uh, and a longer tradition than in data spaces. And, uh, with this, we, we try to have this, this platform that, uh, could be the backbone for, uh, a city in terms of getting information from different sources, from IoT devices, but also from different information systems. That at the end, uh, one of the main aspects that, that we have with this urban platform is the integration, the compilation from very different, uh, sources of data. And then have this, uh, process of breaking, breaking silos, silos so as to have the information, uh, together and, and it's, uh, the, the added value of this data, uh, could be obviously, uh, bigger. Integrating different domains, uh, for the, the, so the, the day-to-day activities in the, in a municipality or in a territory. So, uh, with this, uh, we will try to orchestrate this digital transformation through these different, uh, tools. And, um, um, tracking, uh, the, the different trends that, that, that we are now ongoing. And now I would like to briefly explain the work, uh, the, the, the outcomes that we have produced in this, uh, working group up to now. Uh, organized in, in different working groups, for example, working group one, IT solutions for integrated cities management and use cases. The leader was, uh, Ramon, uh, from the city of Valencia, now in, in the private sector. And this, uh, this, uh, working group provided different deliverables that, uh, you have here and were completed and, and the working group, the task were done. So for, with regards to working group two, smart, uh, public health, emergency, emergency management. Leonidas Antopoulos from Greece, uh, conducted this, uh, this working group, was the leader and completed this deliverable that you have on the right, uh, of the slide. As for, uh, working group three, smart city platforms, transition into a new architecture. We have, uh, two colleagues from OASC, Martin Briscoe and Mike Mulking, Mulking, the man with the red hat, that provided this, uh, document, this deliverable, uh, mainly focused on interoperability. That is, uh, the, one of the key issues that are managing in OASC. For, with regards to working group four, that is focused on tourism, health and resilience, uh, management for the perspect, from the perspective of a smart, uh, city platform. Antonio Bernal, for, from Indram insight, uh, leaded this, uh, this group and completed the deliverable that you are, that you have on the screen. Uh, working group five, um, one of the main, uh, in terms of production because, uh, let me, uh, show off, uh, as the, as the smart city of a city in Valencia that we led this, uh, this relevant, uh, deliverable, that is a kind of reference framework, a roadmap for cities to deploy their smart city projects. Uh, this working group was led by Ramon also. And I think that you are going to explain briefly this, this reference document that is, uh, extremely good. And, uh, other wor, working groups that are currently, um, carrying out their, their activities is working group, uh, six, data and APIs in the smart city platform, led by Leonidas Antopoulos. And, uh, the, the, the deliverable will be completed, uh, in working group, uh, six, but it's ongoing. So it needs some, uh, uh, revision processes, but the, the liberal is quite, you know, quite well status of advance and is expected to be published next year. Uh, working group seven, that is focused on tourism, uh, smart destination platforms, uh, is led by Sandra Carvao from UN Tourism and Ethegiel Garcia from Segitur, the national agency in Spain for tourism. So the report is being finalized, is, is coming to an end, the process of, of collaboration and, uh, will be presented next year too. And finally, uh, working group eight for integrated urban land and housing data framework is led by Mike Salizze from UNA ECE. And, uh, during this year and the next one, we expect to have this, uh, deliverable, uh, ready because they are in the process of kicking off. So, and that's all that I wanted to share with regards to the working group. And now it's time to, to give the floor to the different panelists. And to start with, uh, I would like to introduce, uh, Ms. Bettina Tratz Ryan, working group two leader of the Euphorous City Thematic Group on Digital Transformation for People-Centered Cities. So Bettina will present policy benchmark for digital transformation on people-centered cities. Bettina, who is yours? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is a great honor to be here today and, uh, if this is, enter.
Yeah.
It could be so easy and I'm in technology. So, uh, to present, uh, what we have done in our group, uh, two so far. So just, uh, give you a, a little bit, uh, of a, a background. Um, policy is always very dry, right? And when we put policy in place, policy varies, uh, concretely, uh, differently from the maturity of the city, from the stakeholders that we have, from the technology which we're trying to ring fence and benchmark on. So what our work group, uh, is, uh, really doing is like trying to build, uh, a, uh, is this my slide deck? I don't think so.
It seems to me that is, uh, no, it's yours, I think it's yours.
It's yours.
Ah, yes, so, uh, I have in my script, uh, yes.
Yeah.
So then let's, uh, change the order.
Let's change to, we're flexible, right?
Yeah.
Because otherwise I don't know if we can change it in here or if the guys have to do it.
First, yeah. No, here, is this one?
Because I've, I'm there.
Is it, uh, is it yours?
No.
No, it is.
Just quickly change it.
We're seeing.
Because just working for.
The script, the script was different. Sorry for that one.
So you don't have to hear me again, so we can continue. Yay! So, uh, um, so the, the challenge is really, we, we, we have policy, we need to benchmark. But, um, I think what we need to understand is policy is not just like one time and then we just benchmark it if it's good or bad. But we need appropriate, but we really to make sure that, uh, we have digital initiatives that continuously meet the expectations of our citizens and, uh, that these technology, uh, implementations, they're also well met with the future trends of, uh, the tech ecosystems that are coming in place in regard to like the citizen expectation and the sustainability. So what we need is a dynamic environment that benchmarks technology against what we need in cities. On the other hand though, um, we have a technology foundation, right? And now with new AI and digital twins and there's discussion about how we actually integrate. We also have to make sure that that digital foundation is future-proof. So on the one hand, we have citizen expectations and sustainability. On the other hand, we have that technical capacity that we need to build so that the technology of the futures are well met with, uh, digital guidelines that we have within our city. So citizens' expectations and tech, uh, technology foundation. And there is a real twist in this because also our cities, they are changing constantly from like a big conglomerate of, uh, transportation and, uh, and public sector, uh, activities. We have, uh, safety, we have, uh, harbors and airports. But we're also seeing that there's a community and centricity that is going to be built on like what we call fifteen-minute cities. So policies need to focus on enhancing the digital infrastructure so that everybody, whether I'm an airport authority, which is a public sector govern, uh, governance architect, or a mayor or a community leader, they all have access to these digital technologies to support healthcare or sustainable living, um, smart building development and so on. So we need also that part of accessibility into our policy structures that may vary because we have democratization in technology. Uh, AI makes it easier for us to actually to chat GPT, for instance, to access data and complex outcomes. So it's not only that technology is becoming more complex, but it also can become a change agent, a change manager for the accessibility of technology. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of framework because when people talk about policy benchmarks, they just feel that this is a policy that we are providing a, uh, maturity assessment on, on a very stagnant definition of technology, but it's not. Technology is evolving, it becomes more complex, it becomes invisible in our daily life because it's embedded in smartphones and lighting system and vehicles and so on. So there's a whole complexity that is connected to like how we need to see that. So what we in Ver Group Two have published is a document that actually looks at a benchmarking environment that is completely dynamic. And this dynamic makes it a little bit complex because what we need to look into is that transformation that technology foundations are experiencing and also the technology influences, as I had mentioned, that it has on the community. So what we did in the, uh, digital maturity, uh, benchmark for policies, we tried to combine, um, a set of KPIs and measures. We looked at the scope of the policy and then we built, built a framework where we said, is that policy in itself today fit to pro, provide guardrails for a specific digitization strategy? And is this fitness still possible or is it still available as technology is moving on? So that's the dynamic part of it. So you can see there has been, uh, a lot of thinking about how we actually, um, investigate policy and how we actually bridge the ineptness of some policies to meet the technology advances of the, uh, future. Now, what we found in our research and our assessment that there's a policy dilemma and with the benchmark also an opportunity. So when we benchmark policy, we need to benchmark it against, you know, like what is actually perceived being accurate and tolerable from a citizen perspective or what is also could be a benefit? And where the benchmark actually restricts innovation, right? So I'll give you an example, we have lots of data on, uh, on journey maps of citizens, yeah? So in theory, we could take all that data and we could actually build really smart and knowledgeable journeys, maps out of it. But in, in practice, we have trust issues, we have GDPR issues. We have issues on like buyers and other kind of like systems. So the question is always like what is possibly technical and what is actually accepted in the community? So there could be that policies, when they are being done by policymakers, they can restrict innovation. They could, right? They don't have to, but they could. And so that dichotomy between what are my concerns and what are my balancing, um, of innovation capability? and what are my balancing of innovation capabilities, this is what we try to capture in the dynamic policy assessment. Because maybe at one point, we want to, and I'm just saying, open AI and open data for the perspective of innovation. But once we understand what a technology can provide, we want to close the guardrails so ensure that what comes next is actually acceptable to the community and to the decision-makers. So there is a dilemma and an opportunity inside. So what we actually developed and have published in a document is a dynamic policy framework. And that policy framework starts with the understanding of like what are the innovations or technologies, AI, cityvers or whatever, that this policy is capturing? And also what are the strategies of the city to actually embrace that kind of technology in the future? So we need to already have KPIs from a citizen perspective, from a social perspective, and we need to benchmark the impacts early on. Now, then we need to have a dynamic component because the dynamic component says like, okay, I have a policy and I know what my technology is. But what is like the point where I need to make a change, right? So for a younger person, it might be different than from somebody who's not so digital or fine. From an innovator, an entrepreneur side in the city, it's different than from a citizen. So we need to also define these thresholds where we then say, stop, policy doesn't work anymore, now we have to make amendments, we need to change it. It could be on a variety of different influences that make that happen. And what we're doing here in the cycle is we're talking about the widest influences that this technology could have on equity and human rights, inclusion, sustainability. And so we really developed a measure and KPI assessment where we can actually understand for a city, like when is that policy available? How and what is the threshold when we should change it? And the policy level advancements, we have categorized them in five different one and they're all like listed in detail in the document. But you can see that we put a lot of initiative into place to say like, is a policy just there? So that would be on a maturity level, the lowest denominator. And how is the policy actually shaping the conversation? Shaping the ecosystem, shaping what is actually possible? So if a policy is not just in place, but it is actually already encompassing some of the transformative capacity, then we would rate it a four. So this is kind of like the assessment when we have, when we build a real-time now assessment for the policy assessment. And the dynamic focal areas, there are people-centricity institutions, digitization, society, sustainability and economy. So we have built that policy benchmark. And there's of course a lot of information in there. So, but it's very dry, as I said in the beginning, it's very hard. So our workgroup has actually said, we're not stopping here, we're just going on. So we are actually now building a call for pilot cities to take it. We take them on the hand, we're not just giving them the paper and say, try it out. But we build material, a frequently asked question. So how you actually involve your stakeholders? What do you tell them? Why should they participate? What kind of data we are looking for? We want to create a user guide. And I mean, my idea is as a workgroup leader that we have some sort of like a tiger team. So you pick up the phone and call a friend if you have a problem, right? Because only this way we can actually get adoption. We also, you know, I showed you here in the list, you know, we have sustainability, we have digital equity, we have policymakers. But we want to start with sustainability maybe as carving out some of the policies because these are easy, right? Everybody wants to have a sustainable city, we want to have an equitable city. So instead of giving them the entire benchmark, let's start maybe with some of the categories that there are much easier to handle with and they have the better stakeholder engagement. So we're not done, we're just starting into the second round. We also want to have some podcasts and we heard we can publish this over the ITU channel. So I really want to get really deeply involved because we believe technology is there, there are a lot of vendor ecosystems there. But we need to really ensure that we guide the cities to this process of technology adoption. This is the information on the document that was published again. And we have a very aggressive target, we want to have the frequently asked question and an initial guide for sustainability out by mid of February. So we're working hard on it. If you want to participate, we're still looking for new talent. So thank you.
Thank you, Betina, for sharing your insights about this thematic group, about people, mainly people. And now I would like to move to another thematic group. Dr. Sumaya Bendahou is working for leader on the thematic group about artificial intelligence in cities. Sumaya will discuss how artificial intelligence can be leveraged, responsible to improve governance, inclusivity, sustainability. So, Sumaya, the floor is yours.
So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for this invitation and to the special session on U4SSC. So it's an honor for me to be presenting today the latest work of U4SSC for the group, for the thematic group on artificial intelligence that I'm co-leading with Dr. Okanjerai and with a special focus on my working group, Working Group Four, on fostering inclusive, responsible and sustainable AI. So Ernesto was reminding us on a note that we should stick to the ten minutes and maybe seven. So I will try my best, I don't promise, but I will try my best to stick to that. So cities today are facing tremendous challenges. It has been presented this morning, I will not go into the details. Alina has presented this morning the figures on housing. Christina has presenting the impacts on related to the challenges that cities, urbanization are leading to today in term of population growth, resource limitation. Energy is an issue, traffic is an issue, water scarcity is an issue. So and the list goes on and on and on. And we can cite like hundreds of challenges that cities are facing today. And artificial intelligence is presenting as one of the way, one of the potential solution that is providing maybe some help to the cities into looking into that. Globally, and the global assessment report that we have published recently with UN Habitat, in collaboration with UN Habitat funded by IDRC, is doing this round of situation and overview, giving an overview of how cities are implementing AI and looking into responsible AI. And we can say that globally, seventy-five percent of the cities are entrusted or have already implemented AI for helping cities into looking into different aspects, optimizing public services, transportation, utilities, safety as well, crisis management, managing rapid urbanization and resource casualties, managing fostering more inclusive community by engaging citizens and increasing and improving participation from citizens for a better quality of life and well-being, as was presenting this morning by Dr. Okanjerai. And AI can be a solution. It's embedded in all different type of domains in our society today. We can find it for improving urban management, we can find in surveillance with law enforcement, environment monitoring as well, public healthcare and different other environments. So AI is providing different benefits. And in the report, we have noticed that fifty-seven percent of the cities have reported cost-saving, fifty-three percent of the cities have improved operation efficiency, providing better services, access to services as well, faster saving time as well. So those are all different types of benefits that we are observing from implementing AI in cities and optimizing the use of AI. But unfortunately, challenges are persistent. We are seeing multiple challenges, we are seeing risks as well, perception of risks and concerns from city mayors, city managers related to the balance of the human aspect, human value, as it was presented this morning, related to discrimination biases, related to different aspects, related on the fake news, on the disinformation, misinformation and all these aspects, different persistent challenges. So this is why the thematic group on artificial intelligence in cities bringing together multiple experts worldwide from different diversity of background. This morning, Dr. Jamusi was asking who is coming from ONG, who is coming from NGOs, from international organization, from academic. And this is like, these groups are encompassing multiple experts and each one of the experts are bringing their perspective into the different thematic groups. So this thematic group that is, we are leading on AI for cities is trying to provide different solutions, different aspects through frameworks, methodology, approaches that are developed in looking into ethical aspect, looking into better integrate AI with different technology, a set of technology, IOTs, blockchain, quantum computing and different technology to develop in alignment with different global frameworks and global standards for these different areas. So there is five actual working group. So the first working group on guiding principle for artificial intelligence have completed the outcome and the deliverables. So the guiding principle for artificial intelligence is available alongside with five different case study published and it was led by Dr. Okanjerai. The second working group is on autonomous cities, is very close to an end and it will be published soon. And it's exploring the potential of urban service, operational processes autonomously and will develop a framework to assess the viability and the requirements of autonomous cities. So a guide will be provided with different, with ten different case study as well. A third working group on AI-driven KPIs is providing a very original way of measuring KPIs using artificial intelligence and data and different sources to be able to provide a new way of collecting data, analyzing data and providing feedbacks on the KPIs. So the deliverable will be a guide to AI-driven KPIs. Several case study will be provided as well. And the upcoming meetings will be next year on January, February and April 2026. The four working group, which is Fair for City, Fostering AI for Inclusive and Responsible Cities. So it's a working group that is really trying to reconnect and re-centralize the working group on AI for cities. And it's trying to develop, so this working group is trying to develop a repository of different frameworks, models and concept to explain four different dimensions, fair AI, inclusive AI, responsible AI and sustainable AI. Each one of these concepts have been addressed, looking into the principles that are defining this concept, the key issues and challenges and the elements that are the existing measurement frameworks. At this stage, we have looked as subgroups in the four different areas. And the next stages of this working group is really to connect all the frameworks. So the idea is to create a database, a repository that will be published on the UNUE.gov repository platform. And this platform will help city and guide city into how to connect the different elements and to see how the synergy can be created for having fair AI. So fair AI, inclusive AI, sustainable AI and responsible AI. So what we have said this morning is really reconnected with the purpose, why we need to implement AI. So in this guide, we are showing that for the cities that they don't have enough resources. For example, it's important to assess, well assess, if AI is really needed and to connect it with the need and priority of the city and then to be able to start to look into what are the frameworks that are available to guide the different cities. So we are at that stage and we are inviting you at this level to collaborate with us by implementing. So this platform is open, you just need to register and it will be fed regularly with these different frameworks and guidelines available for cities and it will be labeled with different keywords that will help cities into knowing what are the needs into looking into this framework. The last and not the least working group is on Agentic AI on cities. And it's a new group that is led as well by Dr. Okanjerai. And it's looking onto linking autonomous cities with Agentic AI and seeing how both of them will be helping cities in improving the and facing the different challenges. So the working group will also investigate developing assessment frameworks for Agentic AI and conduct different, in conjunction with the Autonomous Cities Working Group. And so it started already and other meetings will happen on the twenty-sixth of November and fourteenth of January. So thank you very much and I will be happy to answer to any question.
Thank you, Sumaya, for sharing these insights about the potential of transformation for artificial intelligence. We know that the relevance that the artificial intelligence has now in all our today activities. And this thematic group is focused on that and the outcomes are very relevant. Now let me introduce the next panelist. It's not only an excellent colleague, but also a friend. I'm honored to be here with him because, well, apart from being the co-leader of this thematic group and the chair of the LDT City Versedic that Jordi Ortuño has presented before and the head of the Smart City and Data Management Office and Ramon was my predecessor, he paved the path. He is the main architect of this successful project and I'm very grateful to him for that. And he's going to present this framework that was carried out by a team of the Smart City Office and is becoming a reference for other cities. We are using in different presentations all around the world as a very good document that are being used from different cities. So Ramon, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Yes, now, now, now it's okay? Okay, thank you very much. Just to give you some points on this reference framework for integrated management of a smart, sustainable city. This has been done by CEO's experience. And then what we would like is just to give technicians and also political city responsibles to have the roadmap and how they can provide a good position and evolution for a smart and sustainable city. Just to, what you will find in this deliverable is the current facing challenges that the smart and sustainable cities have and the governance that you will lead for this smart city. Of course, the importance, the contribution of sustainable development goals and the digital transformation of cities as a basic piece of innovation. It is also important, and this morning all can say it is that the value base of digital government. So and then you will find some answers on it's a smart city, a sustainable city. We think that the yes, because we at the end, we look for the same things that is improve the quality of life of citizens and also solve public problems. So all what we... So all what we are doing is just to take technology in order to be more, more able to make solutions for all people is doing. So then it's really important, these SDGs, the eleven SDGs. And we will try to provide guidance on how a city planner, ICT planner, how he can do this action plan. So it is important to also remark the barriers that you will find concerning the implementation of this urban digital infrastructure. The second chapter is thus, is just related with ICT governance. So then you, you can find here a figure on twenty twelve that we were centered on, on citizen. And then you will see that there is a convergence between KPIs, strategic KPIs, enormous standards and then operative KPIs for the different services of a city. And at the end, we need also to have two main things, the technological part that we need to, to get all this data together and then to try to create the different services for, with this data put together. And also it is important to, to make a change management of the operation that we have on the city. The second part of this chapter is just looking for which is the best governance of this ICT, of this data service. Then we call the, the smart city action layers. So you will need a smart office and in this smart office, you need to some guidelines on how we can take the information that coming from private companies, because they are providing services to the city. And then we create in twenty fourteen, I think, more than ten years ago, what we call a smart clauses. What is a smart clauses? It's what you put in the public tender in order to take the data from these private companies that are providing us with services. And then we put which data we need, we put with which frequency we need this data. And then we take this data together in this unit repository in order to be able to make plans and so on. The next chapter is concerning urban technological reference architecture. So we try to define the smart and sustainable cities taxonomy. At the end, what we have is cities that are a dynamic system in permanent evolution with multiple complex interaction among people, citizens, visitors and the environment, physical world. So then we have concrete, a number of infrastructures that we have in all cities, communication, mobility, electricity. These, these main infrastructures that we have. So what we need is just to identify what we need to, trying to solve what they are needed. So then we, we think that we need a, a urban data platform, a platform where it's able to take all the IOT, but also to take all the information coming from information systems and then to, to identify the layers that we need in order to manage this data, to provide the services that we, we are looking for for citizen. And again, this urban data platform is just one of the place, that one of the main elements that we need for a city environment. So we identify which is the IT ecosystem of a city. There is a number of common components that they have to be managed in a service and micro-service oriented architecture. But we need, we need the geographical information system, we need the record management for the administrative issues. And then we need this urban data platform as the core system. So then around this, we have too many solutions concerning, which are the main, that is in the figure in this one, that we, we need to solve different contexts concerning identity, concerning documents, concerning record management and then to try to solve all the administrative issues. So then at the end, what we need to look for is just to, which are the main building blocks and technical requirements for implementation. And this interoperability is an issue, because then you have to not only to take data from all the municipality, but also, but also to be able to take data for all ecosystem. And then this is a crucial word that we have to take into account. The other thing that is really important is that we, we don't have a smart city if, if we don't have a connected city. So you, someone told before, so the connectivity scenario of telecommunications services is a really important things in a, in a city. We need people and personal communication, but also matching, too much in communication. So then we need to make this cooperative network and then try to be a connected city in order to provide the services in all the territory and able to, just to try to look for which are the main efficient way to take this, this connectivity in all the city. And at the end, we have here how we can track to abstract this experience on smart and sustainable city ICT management and try to identify with GovStack digital government platform approach, which are the main components of this digital government approach also. We look for the, in their building blocks and a smart destination platform. And at the end, we try to just to abstract to this, what one college told before, this digital public goods model and this digital public infrastructure for all what we need to solve any, anything in the city. Seven minutes and a half.
Brilliant, as usual. Thank you for sharing this outcome of, of the working group, the thematic group that I have presented in my introduction for data spaces and urban platform. And now let's move back to the thematic group, people center, the digital transformation for people-centered cities. Now we have the pleasure to welcome Mr. John Smitsilas, that is co-leader of the, of the working, the working group three in this thematic group, that will present the, the work on performance, impact and maturity assessment. John, the floor is yours.
I have my timer too.
And you all for being so strict with the time, with the timer.
There we go. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Wanted to provide you, my name is John Smitsilas, I'm the co-leader of Working Group Three. Here is the scope. We've had a number of changes in our scope over a period of time. Now we're focused really on two things. One is to develop a KPI framework and high-level impact assessment and then a maturity assessment model. Work has been ongoing, a little bit of stop and start. We had gotten to a point and then I think, you know, if we talk about it, we started work in twenty twenty two. We developed a set of key performance indicators. And then the key thing was we went to cities and asked them, you know, what, you know, what, what are your opinions? What do you think? And they came back with essentially, you know, go back and redo things. And I think the KPIs were too much focused again on just collecting data and collecting information and not looking at the whole sort of ecosystem that we could put behind it. I always like to talk about a little project that happened in the city I live in, in Oak Hill in Canada, where a local school was the first city, was the first school in Canada that put computers in the classroom. And a year and a half later was the first school that took all the computers out of the classroom. Because nobody actually asked the question, why are we putting computers in the classroom? And so this is the kind of questions we got back. And so we think now we've refocused on two things. One, the development of our key performance indicators, which we should complete by this year. The next is working on next year is a maturity assessment so that people can now look at sort of the extent that they've implemented these things. So the way that we refocused our new approach and really got to thank Dr. Okan is to not only put the key performance indicators together, but then look at what do you measure in terms of the outputs and usage? So not only what we implement, but what does it actually deliver for the cities? What does it deliver as an outcome that makes a city more livable, et cetera? And then do we actually achieve something with this? So yes, we did it, people implemented, but what did we actually achieve it? Do we achieve the policy goal that we were looking for? And so this was our sort of new way of looking at things. To do that, we updated our dimensions and sub-dimensions. If you're familiar with the original U for S U C KPIs, we developed a number of dimensions and sub-dimensions. We tried to follow it as much as possible. We put together, you know, under the three dimensions of economy, environment, society and culture. And then developed the following sub-dimensions that looked more now at digital transformation rather than smartness and sustainability. And so we tried to bring these sort of all together. And the new sort of structure that we came up with was this idea again of what do we do for digital enablement? What are the outputs and usage and what are the outcomes and impacts? So, you know, if we looked at, in this case, under energy or electrical grid, you know, in digital, we might look at smart grid implementation. Have we put smart metering in place? What kind of renewable energy infrastructure do we put in place? So these are the actual, you know, things that we ask cities to measure for. Are they implementing sort of this digital transformation? What should that, what should that lead to is, and we always say it should, is in this case, the various measures of the grid efficiency, the grid uptime. So if, if we put all this in place, does the grid actually now, our electrical grid, do we actually now have power more? Is it, is it more reliable? Are we also now seeing that there is a reduction in demand because of the things we're putting in place? And the, sort of the final thing that we've always talked about in, in our industry, and I've been involved since my early days at BlackBerry, where we always talked about, you know, ICT is going to enable the sustainable future. You know, so we've put the grid infrastructure in place, we've enabled it, we're starting to get a better grid. Do we now actually get, you know, a reduction in GHG emissions, which we've always talked about? And once we've now set up this sort of pathway, we can actually measure. So are things actually happening that we expect them to happen? Because this is why we do digital enablement, we have a real goal in place. And so our work is going to continue. We are going to put out a draft set of KPIs over, over the next month or so. We're going to ask people again for more feedback on them, look at them, arrange them in the order that we, we want so that we have this sort of format. And we're hoping that we'll finish this work by the end of this year and next year work on the maturity assessment. So, and thank you. And if you want to be involved, sort of please give us, please sort of reach out to the work group.
Six months. Yeah, perfect. Great. Thank you, John, for the time and for sharing these relevant insights about the measurement of impact, so assessment. So it's very important, apart from doing things, measuring the, the impact. Now let's move to the last speaker, last but not least. We stay in the same thematic group for digital transformation for people-centered cities. But now the group that is co-leading Bas Bosma with Teppo Rantanen, that Teppo was initially expected to be here, but unfortunately he's sick. And Bas will share with us the, the result of this working group on digital development goals.
Thank you, Ernesto.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Ernesto, again, thank you, colleagues, friends. Nice to be here. The United Nations environment is slightly new to me, so let me just give me a brief introduction to myself so that we get to know each other a little bit more. My name is Bas, I'm from the Netherlands. Been working on urban innovation for the past twenty-four years of my life. Typically, when I keynote, I like to open with saying that I was born in the year twenty-nine BG, born in the year twenty-nine before Google. And if you know when Google was founded, you know how old I am. But I always liked it as a background that I sit with one leg in a very old analog world and the other leg in a fundamentally digital world. That provides me with a very critical perspective, which is why I love having a show this particular assignment of creating a framework for the digital development goals for cities, which I think is very, very imperative. It's very timely that we are going to create that right now and hopefully as collaborative as humanly possible. I learned a lot from your presentations today and I thank you for sharing as open-heartedly as you did. There are a lot of outcomes that we should build on. The fellow leader to this particular initiative is Teppo Rantanen from Finland. He is one of the most profound innovation leaders, one of the most celebrated innovation, urban innovation leaders in, 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 within the EU, I would say. A long, long, long background. The city of Tampa is one of the darlings, I would say, within the European Union when it comes to smart city developments with great, great examples. So I'm very proud that this friend and colleague of mine should co-chair this particular initiative together with me. The goal of the digital development goals work group is simple and complex. The text reads it out, but first of all, I think it's very important that we regard this task as being in support of the sustainable development goals, quite obviously. And we all see, I hardly have to explain this particular audience, how digital development goals are badly needed right now to actually get to that point that we are successful delivering at the sustainable development goals in this digital age, a digital age that's growing fast. I think it's also easy to see where we go wrong if we don't build those digital development goals. I think the past several decades have seen how we have achieved great, great many things. Efficiencies, new ways of learning, tech and diplomacy, whatever you want to make of it. It's a lot that we achieved, but also a lot of things that didn't go too well. A lot of ethical challenges that we have seen with digital in our cities, in our societies, anything from fake news to, 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 to veracity of data and so on and so forth. We can no longer trust the next phases of digitalization to be benign by default. It requires action, it requires a vision, it requires clear goal setting for, for what we want to achieve. If we don't, in times of accelerated digital change, the output may also be accelerated negative. It does require that, that change. Then the question is, why now? Shouldn't we have done this then ten years ago? Well, there is a very beautiful saying, a very beautiful saying, and that runs like this. The best moment to plant a tree is twenty years ago. The second best moment to plant a tree is now. So we have to do it now. There are other reasons for doing it now, which is, yes, technologies are accelerating. New technologies like virtualization technologies, artificial intelligence are pushing the agenda on this. Without that plan, it will just accelerate without a particular direction that we either like or love or appreciate. So very good reasons to do this now and to build this framework now. There's several things that we think are part of building this digital development goals. One of the things here listed on this, on this slide is to build a shared language. To define goals is one thing, but if we lack the language through which we can share across the globe, what it is we're building here and why, and how these goals get defined from culture to culture, from geography, geography to geography, from city to city, we're losing a great opportunity. So that language has to be built, especially in a time where the pushback against, let's say, global languages produced by global entities are very often not only not understood but pushed back on. It's really a task that we have to get it well. So we're building this framework new, fresh. We have an opportunity to build that language around it. We're going to do this with leadership from across the world. And I think that's a very important thing, not to build this framework and then test it with, let's say, a leader in Kinshasa or a leader in Seoul in Korea. But in fact, work with them from the early stages onward. And that's going to be difficult and it's going to be messy. But this is the only way to do it. It's a great lesson from design thinking, right? Get your people on board early, also those people that have the right and duty to say no. Do it early. So this is what we're going to do. And it translates into the, let's say, the governance framework that we've built around this so far. This needs a lot more detail. We're going to have a core group of people and already there's, obviously this is open, this is open. We're going to invite a lot of people in, but we have already looked, asked and got the confirmations from people that are going to be in that core group. And then said, yes, we're going to volunteer for this. Yes, this is an important mission. We want to put our time into it, which is lovely. We want to put our time into it, which is lovely. And I'm very grateful for, 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 for getting that type of response. Then two circles of people, city leadership from across the world and the other group being eh, a, a circle of relevant domain experts and academia. Kind of giving a hint as to where this is going. This is a group of people have said yes early. There's a number of universities involved. There's people from cities involved that have that background. There's people involved from the world of security, the people involved and are leading in the city verse space. We have several people in the room here. We have Mr. Geert Hilgers, can you just put up your hand? One of those people I'm intensely grateful for, for having said yes. Geert has got a huge background in governance eh, supporting the O A S initiatives. Eh, I think a lot of people know Roland van der Heyde, who is the first chief city verse officer in the world to lead the city in Rotterdam. So it's a unique person with unique, unique know-how. You can find out a lot about these people. Another person I'd love to, to point at, Professor Stephen Goldsmith from Harvard, former mayor of Indianapolis, former deputy mayor of New York City, who said, of course I'm supporting, of course I mean. We're getting this towards this journey starting now. We already have a schedule of meetings set up where people can volunteer. I invite all of you to join in this incredible mission. Eh, look at the eh, familiar pages, pages that we all know. I don't know what it is, was six or seven or eight minutes, but eh, let's get it started. Thank you.
Thank you, Bas. Thank you all the panelists eh, for your insights, your inspiration. Because having here with us eh, this group of vision, visioners so eh, that eh, have been referencing their fields eh, in the cities and in, in their scope. So it's, it's great for us. So during the session, we have analyzed how eh, technologies as artificial intelligence eh, and others eh, urban platforms, data spaces have an impact eh, on, on, on the society. But especially focus, focusing on people. So that's eh, very relevant, how these, all these technologies have eh, in the center, people and being human eh, centered. So for me, it has been a pleasure to moderate this eh, session. And eh, I guess a big applause for the panelists, please. And now I would like to give the floor to the master of ceremony for closing. Thank you.
Thank you to all our speakers for that rich and forward-looking discussion. As we come to the end of today's program, it's my pleasure to invite back to the stage Dr. Okan Geray, Chair of U four S S C, to deliver our closing remarks.
Well, good afternoon again, everyone. Dear colleagues, dear participants, dear friends, dear partners, I would say. As we approach the close of the session, eh, I would like to thank all the participants, actually, all the speakers today. And I hope you have seen the depth and the breadth of the work that we do in U four S S C. We're addressing really critical issues for the cities in general. It, it spans all the way from, let's say, vision, strategy, people, centricity, infrastructure, future foresight, A I. We have, we're actually building almost eh, the, the, the modular building blocks of the city. So the cities based on their needs can mix and match those to address their challenges. I was talking to Dr. Rami actually during the session. We have these building blocks, but maybe one day we will be also able to combine all of these into a whole for the cities. But let's keep on building them first until we get to that point. I'm also again honored to mark the launch of our deliverable today, digital well-being. And it will be available online. Already available? Perfect, it's already available. So for those of you who are interested, please feel free to download it. And Friday on the, in the, on the World Cities Day, we launched the other deliverable on the framework for people-centered digital transformation. That's also available for those of you who are interested. Please feel free to use them in conjunction with your city strategies. I also would like to thank all the UN partners who have supported us. We have twenty UN partners today that are supporting this initiative in general. So I'm very happy to, to gain their support and let's move forward with it. Last but not the least, again, I would like to place, humbly place a call to action with the cities, with the city leaders. Please join us, bring your experiences, bring our opportunities and challenges. Let's address them together. This is a unique platform globally that we have built. It's a, it's a global, truly global platform and a truly global family, I would say. We have the same mission, the same approach. We are passionate about a people-centric approach, a people-first approach. So let's move forward together. Thank you once again for this special session.
Okan, so thank you as well to all our speakers, moderators and participants for an inspiring and thought-provoking event. Let's continue working together to build cities that are not just smart, but truly sustainable and people-centered. We wish you a wonderful afternoon and look forward to seeing you in future U four S S C engagements. On the, on, once again, on behalf of I T U and the Smart City Expo World Congress, thank you for your active participation and for contributing to this global conversation on inclusive, future-ready and sustainable cities. We wish you a wonderful eh, day. Just eh, just before you leave, maybe we could have a group photo eh, at the, at the stage, not, not on the stage, but behind. So let's just take one group photo. Thank you.